I think he's still tired from red rain. He looks tired.
Ten days of tender emotion. Can you imagine emotion in that?
I'll let go, okay? Great for the beach, oh my god. We gotta get serious now. Oh. AJ. My amateur quit. And that other personnel quit. That other person I was having, she's gone today. It's gonna be night and day to do that.
Get her to call on you.
What'd you do, at least ten times?
Call a friend or something.
Never at all.
Yeah. That's the hard part. No.
They're all.
Just adjusting the volume.
Well, that's a good one.
Grab the agenda from out there.
It says my, where are we? Did you know?
No.
Call the meeting to order, and Lana will call the roll call. Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Kittleson.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Orsma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Trual.
Here.
And O'Connor is absent and excused, so we have eleven aldermen present tonight. Thank you. Are there any communications from our alderpersons this evening? Give you a quick update or reminder in that this Thursday evening, September 28th, is a committee of the whole regarding our new proposal for the new public works facility. And that meeting is here in the council chambers. At six o'clock, and I'm sorry that I'm asking that more of a question than a statement. Okay, it's Thursday evening, six o'clock, in the council chambers. And then we have budget meetings coming up on October 5th, 12th, and 26th. And then adoption of the budget on November 14th. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to ask that, ask your indulgence in that we move agenda item number fifteen regarding the healthcare plan to the beginning of new business. We do have a consultant with us this evening. Are there any objections to making that change? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move that to the beginning of new business. Thank you. We'll start out with an update from City Attorney Dregney regarding work with the Landmarks Commission. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Rodney, could we? There we go. First, and Engelberger, you might want to move over. My first working meeting, working session with the Landmarks Commission was in June. My second meeting with the commission was last week, September 20th. I'm just gonna give you an update on, again, the issues they're working on and what the status of those issues is. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm gonna go through some of this quickly, because we've been through before, but if anyone wants me to slow down, just please ask me to slow down. So as you may recall, we have several different categories of law that apply to historic preservation. We have chapter thirty-eight of the city's ordinances, which is essentially administered by the Landmarks Commission. That's the chapter where individual sites can be designated as local landmarks, or local landmark sites, or landmark districts, historic districts. We also have chapter seventy-eight in the zoning code, which includes a district called the downtown design overlay zoning district. And then, under state and national law, we have the possibility that buildings or sites might be listed on the national or state register of historic places. I'm going to skip over some of this stuff. Chapter thirty-eight regulates landmarks, including the alteration or reconstruction, or things affecting the exterior of local landmarks, demolition of local landmarks. Historic districts, chapter thirty-eight is currently somewhat unclear regarding what activities are regulated. Chapter seventy-eight regulates changes in appearance, such as painting, or physical modifications to structures, including demolition. Listing on the national register doesn't involve any regulatory consequences. Under chapter thirty-eight, landmarks-related issues are handled almost exclusively by the Landmarks Commission. Although council approval is required to designate landmarks and historic districts, once such a designation is made, the Landmarks Commission essentially has authority to make decisions. Under chapter seventy-eight, with the zoning code, if something is a local landmark, under the current ordinance, the Landmarks Commission makes a recommendation, and the Plan Commission makes a final decision. If it's not a locally designated landmark, the Plan Commission makes a final decision. As you know, there's been some disagreement with my opinion on that. Some people disagree with that interpretation of the ordinance, but that's my interpretation of the ordinance. And... We've identified some overlapping and inconsistent procedures in chapters thirty-eight and seventy-eight. Let's get to this. So, the Landmarks Commission is, on this particular issue, is they're recommending, at this point, retaining the current structure, but removing landmarks, landmark sites, and landmark districts entirely from review under chapter seventy-eight. So if it's a locally designated landmark, it would not be, even if it's located in the downtown design overlay zoning district, it would not be something that would be handled under chapter seventy-eight. Plan Commission wouldn't have any involvement. It would strictly be a Landmarks Commission review process. What role, if any, should Landmarks Commission have in reviewing and approving applications under seventy-eight? So it's not a locally designated landmark. It's just in the downtown design overlay zoning district. What should the role of the Landmarks Commission be? Again, under the current ordinance, they don't have, the Landmarks Commission has no role. It's just a Plan Commission decision. Here's where Landmarks Commission is on this right now. They're still working on this issue. They want to see what standards they will develop for chapter seventy-eight, standards that will govern decision-making, and then, once they know what standards they're gonna recommend that will govern the decision-making, then they're gonna decide whether they think they should be participating in that process yet. What I'm hearing from them is their sense is that if the standards are sufficiently clear and acceptable to them, then they're thinking maybe they wouldn't need to be involved in making decisions under chapter seventy-eight, and that would just go to the Plan Commission. But they're still discussing that issue. We've talked about the need for, at the commission, about the standards governing proposed demolition of locally designated landmarks. The current ordinance actually does not allow for the approval, does not allow them to approve the demolition of a local landmark. If you're a designated local landmark, no option for demolition whatsoever. So they're talking about changing that, and talking about, well, what should the standard be? So at the meeting last week, this is kind of what came out, this is what came out of that meeting. They're working on this standard. So demolition would be approved only if, following three conditions are satisfied. One, the physical characteristics of the building have changed, meaning changed since it was designated as a local landmark. Two, the change has caused the structure to no longer have the physical characteristics that led to its landmarks designation in the first place. And three, that change was not caused by either a current or prior owner's failure to maintain the building. So that's what they are currently, that's where they are right now with respect to what standard would apply to the proposed demolition of a locally designated landmark. Yes?
Could you give an example of what that would mean? Talked about that, like a natural disaster or something?
Right, okay, so, yes, let's say we have a building, a locally designated landmark. It was designated due to some architectural features, for example, that the commission and the city council believed were consistent with the criteria for designation as a local landmark. And let's say there was a fire, and it was badly destroyed by the fire, and the characteristics of the building that caused it to be designated as a landmark had been destroyed. That would be a circumstance under which demolition could be authorized, or damaged by a storm, or, you know, so, yeah, some natural or accidental change in the physical structure that destroyed whatever it was that was important about the building. That would allow for destruction. But if the building has simply deteriorated, and the changes are the result of deterioration and lack of maintenance, or taking care of the building, then there'd be no option for demolition under this particular standard. So with respect to the rules that apply to locally designated historic districts, the commission is still working on that. They have not made progress on that one yet. With respect to some confusion in the standards under chapter seventy-eight, still, let's see, the, okay, yeah, so they have made a judgment to clearly apply design standards in seventy-eight, five seventeen, to design review and project review. Those standards don't really apply to demolition. With respect to demolition, under chapter seventy-eight, project review, what standard should apply to that? So that's if you're in the downtown design overlay zoning district, you're not a locally designated landmark. That, by the way, is the building that's been the subject of a fair amount of discussion here. The building on Main Street would fit into this category. What standard should apply to deciding whether to approve demolition of such a building? They still haven't developed a recommendation on that issue. There are some additional language issues under chapter seventy-eight they're still working on. Should the council make the final decision about demolition of a building in the downtown design overlay zoning district? They're still working on that one. Well, actually, so this is what they decided in June, but I think they're gonna revisit it. So they're, in June, they said landmarks commission should make a recommendation, Plan Commission, Plan Commission should have a recommendation to council, and final decision by council. That's where they were in June. I'm not sure if they're still there. We didn't get to that last week. Should the city council make the final decision about a locally designated landmark? They're saying landmarks commission should be final, but appealable to the council. That's my understanding of their recommendation at this point. Again, that's from June. This was a new issue that came up last week. Should the city adopt maintenance standards applicable to the downtown design overlay zoning district? And so they're wanting to consider that. And I sent them an example of maintenance standards that were adopted for a downtown historic district by the Village of Oregon. And I said, but they haven't had a chance to really talk about them yet. And that is the status of their work.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Alderperson?
Thank you for the presentation. Does the Landmarks Commission have an idea when this work will be completed? Because it's been like nine months, or longer?
I have encouraged them, and indicated that I think it's important that we proceed with all deliberate speed to complete this process, because the moratorium is in effect until we get done, unless the council decides to change direction here. So I, that's been my message to them, but I have not, I don't have a clear understanding of when they think they'll be done. I would say at a minimum, one more meeting, because they're still working on issues that they haven't made recommendations on. If they finish at that next meeting, then I guess we'd move on from there, but I don't know, I don't know. Alderperson Swadley might have some insight, because he's on the commission.
Sure. Well, we haven't really set a date. I can tell you, we were there till ten thirty, or, it was late the other night. I mean, they were packing up the Opera House, and we were still meeting. So it's kind of a long process, because if you change one piece of language, then obviously it affects something else. If there's something that you would like us to prioritize, we can certainly do that. Matt was kind enough to send us the stuff from Village of Oregon as our homework, so our intention at the next meeting is to take a look at those standards. But if there's something else that you want us to focus on, you can let me know, or let Peggy know, she's the chair of the landmarks, and we can try to at least facilitate that. I'm not really sure if we can really prove it piecemeal or not. We haven't really even talked about that process at all, as far as trying to get some of it going. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
Well, I guess one other thought is, I did say at, I did suggest at the last meeting that I take what they've done and start working on actual drafting, the actual ordinance language. Because right now, we've just been working with, kind of at a conceptual level, and I've suggested, why don't I get started on the actual ordinance drafting? And they said, okay. So I'm gonna get started with that. My hope is that the next time I would meet with them, I would have actual ordinance language for them to look at, on the stuff they've already done, and then they could just focus on, there's probably about five subjects left that they're still dealing with. I think that maybe the more challenging ones are, what standards should apply to demolition in the design overlay district? And how, what rules should apply to locally designated historic districts? And should they adopt maintenance sta, should the city adopt maintenance standards? Those might be the harder issues that they still have to talk about.
I think it would be, just on my behalf, I think it would be a good idea if they looked at the standards that reply to demolition in the downtown overlay district. I know we've got a building that's been waiting for some time now for recommendation or answer. So, I mean, that would be something that I would recommend, that they would look at, prioritize. Are there other thoughts?
And I would just say, part of the challenge has been trying to coordinate schedules as well with the members of the commission and Attorney Dregney. We've been able to do that, but not as often as we would like. So hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, connect next month, and I think we have a little momentum, so hopefully, we can keep that going.
So you're thinking about the first of the year, or before then?
I'm not ready to commit to that, but if that's something you'd like to see, I can certainly take that information back to the larger group and say, you know, there is a sense of urgency that we tried to do this, but we don't want to rush. I mean, we want to get it right, because, I mean, you can see what happens when it's not right. And we certainly don't want to just move the problem. We want to resolve it.
All right. Thank you. And next, we have an update from Alderperson Reeves regarding the CACP work on the council goals and objectives.
So I will give you just a brief overview of where we're at. Just to refresh your memory, in April of 2017, Council President Swadley asked the council to generate some goals to follow during the 2017-18 term. So we did our best to, having, not having a lot of information from the council in terms of specifically what they're looking for. We did our best to look at the intent of what we thought might be the goals they wanted us to work on. So the first thing that seemed to make sense was just to reach out to leadership and ask what's already in place. You know, tell us what's already going on, and then decide if there's further work that needs to be done, or reach back to council and say, okay, what next? So just a, again, a brief overview of the things that we've addressed, at least in some part, there are, if you don't see your item on here, it doesn't mean it's been forgotten. It's just that these are the things that we've had a chance to start addressing. Economic Development Director, HR Director Gillingham sent out, I think we all got this, many, many different job descriptions. So I'd encourage you all to look at that, and, you know, just, there's a lot of information, but it was really good information. So if you have some thoughts about, this is what I'd like to see in that position, if that's the route we take, then that would be good, just to start thinking about what that position might look like, because there were some really good resources that may or may not fit with what you all had in mind. So the next step that we're hoping to, we'd like to meet with the Personnel Committee, the CACP, just to maybe some, have some more discussion about that. We talked about maybe November, but we'd need to, you know, if that works out for the Personnel Committee, maybe we could get together at that next meeting and get on that agenda, so we can continue that discussion. Collaboration with the Stoughton Area School District, you all know that we had the joint meeting in July, and then the two bodies agreed to create a subcommittee, and I believe the plan was for the subcommittee to meet this week, on the 25th. So I think we'll continue to get feedback from that subcommittee.
Not aware that that meeting's taking place at this time?
Oh, it has not taken place yet? I thought it did, okay. Well, so we'll circle back around. Improve internal, external communications, this, so, some of the leadership folks did provide some feedback in terms of how they felt what relevant information they could provide. That's, I think, probably going to be an ongoing, so if you have specific things you'd like to, you know, to share, ideas, I'd suggest you route it back through us if you feel like that's appropriate, whether it goes through Lana to get put on our agenda. Certainly, if you have specific questions about any of the leadership reports, there was a lot of really good information. We won't go through all that, but the attachments and exhibits are all there. So if you have questions for the leadership, you know, you should probably direct those to them. But if there's something that you feel like we're missing, or you have ideas, then that, you know, could go through Lana to get back on the agenda. But one of the things that was a concern was not having an IT director, so that, or, IT, yeah, IT Media Services Director. So that was met on July 11th, so that's a great step in the right direction. Process for committee commission appointments. One of the things was for the committee to develop procedure, application process, and timeline for community member commissions and committee appointments. So to start, Lana's going to send a link to the council with community, committee member names when their term is up. That way, council can be more proactive in offering suggestions for community appointments if they have somebody that they feel like might be a good fit, so that we're not sort of scrambling at the last minute, saying, jeez, I had a great person, and now, you know, the timeline's cutting it too close. So the more we can be proactive, I think that's something we'd all appreciate, and if we know when somebody's term is up, it might give us some idea of whom we may want to recommend. The budget process, this, we sort of had to make a guess about what the intent was on this, but the budget process, it includes input from all standing committees, and that is in place with the CIP committee. That consists of the chair of each standing committee, with the council president overseeing. I will, another recommendation that we're considering is, we did have a challenge setting up a CIP meeting. It wasn't without good intention. Tammy really tried to put, pull the group together, but there were just so many meetings, so that's another suggestion that maybe next year, that CIP meeting should get set up at the reorganizational meeting, after the chairs are chosen. Just get that on the books right off the bat. So again, trying to be more proactive in terms of getting that meeting set up, that was a possibility. Affordable subsidized housing and homelessness, one of the things we realized is there are a number of groups already working on this. Planning Director Shiel did address the question in terms of, you know, some of the zoning and ordinances and that sort of thing, but there's a lot of folks that are, you know, that are already really working on this in the community, so if there's something specific, again, that, you know, that you were looking for this committee to address or answer, you know, I'd route that back as an agenda item. Ordinance review procedure, that has sort of been an ongoing discussion we've been having, but again, Planning Director Shiel did offer some pretty lengthy information about the process and what's already in place, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that as a starting point. Sidewalk special assessment policy, that has, the Public Works Committee did evaluate the sidewalk installation policy ordinance at the May 16th meeting, and recommended no change. And then, again, we have some memos and some information from some of the folks in leadership, if you'd like to take a look at that further. One of the things I think we've talked about a number of times is how to help our citizens replace the lead pipes to houses, and that's come up in a council meeting, and Director Carras does address the question in the memo. I don't know if there's something that can be done beyond that, but that's sort of where it stands in terms of utilities. Improve efficiency and compliance of city council meetings. I think this is something that we could always all appreciate, and it's probably going to be an ongoing conversation. But one of the things that came up that I think, one of the suggestions was sending out the agenda and supporting documents seven days prior. City Clerk Lana did draft, I believe it's a rule, it's actually a city council rule that says, three days, three days prior?
Friday.
Friday at noon. Friday at noon. So, you know, that's, if we wish to, you know, look at changing that, then that would be, you know, something for a future agenda item, but the, it's, I mean, it follows our rule as it stands right now, so. Comprehensive planning, we have a comprehensive plan, so we, it was not really clear, we did talk, I mean, it was sort of a request that we look at smart growth, growth in ordinance revisions, including citizens, so, you know, if there's some specifics, again, that, you know, you'd like us to look at, that certainly can be done, but we, you know, just as a reminder, we do have the comprehensive plan, and I think, you know, maybe we just need to look at following that, but. And one of the questions was in integrated pest management, and our Public Works Director, and I apologize, is it pronounced A-Bear? Does address the question, and he has a memo that's included in the packet. So, and there are some, some other smaller, you know, items that are just sort of straightforward in terms of the liquor licenses, and the information is in the packet. So that sort of brings you up to speed on some of the things we've been working on so far, and will continue to work on.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderperson Reeves? Not at this time. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our public comment period, and we do have two folks that have signed up to speak, but if others are wishing to do so, public comment forums are outside in the hallway. We'll start with Richard McDonald, if you'd like to give us your name and address, please.
My name is Richard McDonald. I live at 524 Kings Lynn in Stoughton, though if you ask my wife, she might say I lived at 304 South Fourth Street, which is the address of the Stoughton Public Library. I wanted to say a few words in favor of the proposal for the new health insurance, which is on the agenda tonight. I've learned that it'll save the city money, not only save the city money, but it sounds like it'll save the employees' money also, and it'll also keep the option for employees. Right now, we have the option, we don't want to use Dean, we can, there's an option that allows us to use other services, and that option will continue. Oh, and very important, it allows us to use the Stoughton Hospital, too, so that's a very important part of it. Also, we have UW and Unity included in there, Unity Court, so I just wanted to encourage you to vote in favor of this proposal. And thank you.
Thank you. And next is Roger Springman.
Roger Springman, 812 Creedeman, and I'm wearing my Final Chance of Summer attire, so I'm hoping you can bear with the look tonight, but I'm taking advantage of the weather, maybe for the last time. Good evening. I've spoken before the council several times on my interest in historic preservation, and I'm doing it again tonight. My concern tonight is the possible lifting of the demolition moratorium affecting two buildings. My specific interest tonight is with regard to the Mant Foundry. First and foremost, I believe the Mant Foundry to have unique value to the city, its residents, developers, and the Riverfront Project. Now, I'm gonna list some characteristics. Its wide-open 10,000-foot floor plan lends itself to many uses, both public and private. Its unique architecture is attractive and adds great interest to the site. And finally, its historic connection to Stoughton's wagon history makes it very desirable as a benchmark building for the Riverfront Project. Second, I have been in conversation with Mark Ernst from Engbert Anderson, and Mark, as you may recall, was the consultant to our June Charette, and he spent a lot of time with us, and we took a tour of the buildings with him this past summer. He is very enthused about saving this building. He is very enthused about saving this building because he sees it having many potential uses. And I'm now going to elaborate a few right now. For example, and this is some of his and some of mine, for example, it could be used as a public gathering space, grocery store, seasonal farmer's market, artisan village, historic exhibit space, coffee shop, tavern, or even a covered premium parking lot, or some combination of the above. So a lot of uses, they can also be done in combination. These uses would enhance the attractiveness of the Riverfront Project for residential growth and bring vitality to the downtown business district. Something to think about. Utilizing the building would give Stoughton a chance to create a brand for the entire Riverfront Project, such as the wagon works, or in the case of Sun Prairie, I'm sure a lot of you have been to the Sun Prairie, the Cannery Row, or Beloit, the iron works. So we're able to brand, if we use this building, as a lockstep part of the project area. And secondly, or finally, with regard to another creative use, putting a public gathering space inside this building or making it available to the public also might change the needs for substantial green space in the project, allowing us to have more development. And finally, I'm making this point, the RDA has been tasked with the job of providing recommendations to the city on the Riverfront Project, and I'm taking this challenge very seriously. To that end, I have developed a Mant Foundry Initiative aimed at developing a marketing portfolio for the building so as to find and inform developers and partners about the great value of the building. This initiative has yet to come before the RDA for discussion and action. From where I sit, it seems premature to remove the demolition moratorium until such time as there is a clear path for the building. Retaining the moratorium would assure potential developers or partners that the city remains wholly committed to keeping this building as an intimate part of the Riverfront Project. In one simple sentence, the Mant Foundry gives Stoughton a chance to have a project that really pops and creates regional buzz and interest. I say let's think big and do this right. Thank you.
Thank you. And those are all that I have registered to speak. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right, thank you. Our consent agenda this evening consists of the September 12th council minutes, the September 13th special council minutes, the September, September 13th Joint Committee of the Whole and Redevelopment Authority minutes, and Resolution 135-2017 requesting exemption from county library tax. The library board approved this resolution on September 20th, 2017. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Your Honor. I just, I'm on the library board and wondered if there's any questions about this last item, which is the requesting exemption. If there would be, then I would ask that it be removed. If there's no questions, I won't ask for the removal.
Certainly. That's exactly the process. You're spot on.
Move to approve.
There's a motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hirsch. Would anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Alder Person Engelberger?
Your Honor, I'd like to have item D removed so our library director can give us a update on what that exemption is.
Absolutely. All right, we're going to remove that and we'll address that then first under new business. So we'll go back to the consent agenda consisting of those council and special meeting minutes. Would any, anyone wish to amend or, or remove any of those items for further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. So we'll begin, there are no old business? There are no, is that good grammar? There is no old business, I'm sorry. There is no old business. We'll begin new business with Resolution 135-2017, which is the requesting exemption from the county library tax. Library Director, Richard, please.
This exemption comes before the library board and the council every year. It allows several things. First of all, by passing this exemption, it means we don't have to pay the county library tax, but it also means that we can receive funding from Dane County. We receive approximately one-third of our funding every year from Dane County. It's between 215,000 and 225,000, depending upon the year. We also have to meet the Dane County library standards, which we do, and that's part of the whole thing, too. So as I said, this comes every year for us and I'm usually here every year to tell, say just what I said. Any questions, more specific questions?
Just wanted to add, is if we don't, if we wouldn't approve, what would happen then?
Well, well, we'd have to pay the county library tax and we wouldn't receive that funding from Dane County. I, it's kind of hard to say because no, as far as I know, no community has ever not approved such a thing.
And they said, I want to pay more tax, right?
Right.
Alder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, thank you, Richard. I want to thank you for that explanation so the community understands what that's about and I would make a motion to approve Resolution 135-217.
There's a motion by Engelberger, second by Hirsch. Further comments or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. New business, as we talked about earlier, we're going to skip way ahead on our agenda to, there are several items that kind of go together. Agenda item 11, 13, and 15 really do go together, but let's start with agenda item 15, Resolution 144 of 2017, coming from our Personnel Committee. Aldwin Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. Personnel presents Resolution 144, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the change of health insurance carriers from Dean Health Care to Quartz Health effective January 1st, 2018, for the 2018 and 2019 calendar years. Personnel Committee approved 5-0 on September 18th and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mieske, second by Boersma. Alder Person Mieske.
This came about as we are in the option year with Dean Health for a lock-in rate on our health premiums. The, our Human Resources Director, under direction, started looking at other options to see if it was feasible to find a better deal and she did. And we'll, because of that, we will be saving over $230,000 in the next two years.
Okay, thank you. And I know that AJ is here to speak as well as?
I also have Damian Simons here with me from Cottingham and Butler.
Could you go to the microphone?
Absolutely. Thank you, I'll try.
I'll start over. Damian Simons is our partner with Cottingham and Butler, who actually goes out and shops the insurance market for us, gets us the best possible deal that we can possibly have for the city. So Rodney's going to run the slideshow here for us and we're going to go ahead and start with that first slide, Rodney. Before I talk about this, I just want to give a little bit of history. I had sent a email out to all of you, kind of giving a recap as to what's happened for those of you that haven't been here since '14. But just to get us all on the same page, in 2014, the city hired myself as the HR Director to come in and really start focusing on the insurance plans, what the structure of the plans look like, and to manage the cost of those plans. And that's not just the health plan, that's our dental plan, our insurance plans for liability across the board. And the goals were to manage those insurance plans and ensure that we had competitive benefits and cost-effective plans. So in 2015, that would have been my first year for the actual full cycle, I had made the recommendation that we change from our existing broker of Tricor to partner with Cottingham and Butler. And they have a much larger, what's called, book of business and are able to better market our plan out in the marketplace. So due to the change there, we went from a self-funded plan, which is where an employee can go to any physician that they would like to, any provider, we switched to Dean Health. And that was based on 95% of our employees at that time were utilizing Dean. So it wasn't a major shift for us, other than that 5% of our employees had to either move into the Dean Plan or use what was called a point of service where you pay more, and we'll talk a little bit about that. In 2017, as you guys all know, there's a lot going on in the insurance place. I don't know if you've heard that commercial from Group Health, but they're talking about all of these insurance companies being bought up and the change is also going on with the Affordable Care Act. So with that happening and looking at our third year and our rate lock, we were looking at 15%. So at that point, we decided it's time to go out to market and see what's happening. So as I go through this, I've had some feedback from employees who are concerned that the numbers aren't accurate. And I want to just go on the record for saying those numbers come from our broker and they also come from the insurance companies. So just want to be very clear that there's no playing with the numbers, there's no smoke and mirrors. This is what our renewal costs and these are the numbers that we will be dealing with. So want to be really clear there. As well as, just a little history on myself, I don't take the health insurance here at the city exactly for that reason. So I'm not leaning one direction or the other. I don't take the plan. So I'm not being driven one direction or the other, I am completely neutral for you. So with that being said, I'm going to start with the Dean Plan for 2018 and what that looked like. So as we said, we had a rate cap that was put in place for the second and third year of our plan and it was set in 2018 not to exceed 8%. After we took our plan out to market and Quartz came in with their bid, Dean was able to lower theirs to a 5.11% increase. So the total Dean premium then for 2018 would have been 1.5 million. So we decided at that point, let's take this baby out to market and that's where Quartz came in and helped drive that price down. Go to the next screen. The question is, why would you take it to market? And as I said before, we had the not to exceed numbers for year 17 and 18 and overall with that 15% premium increase that affected the bottom line, it just made sense. And like I talked about before, all the changes going on in the insurance marketplace, it was time to do this. Yep.
And the idea was, in going to market, was not necessarily to cause this, this shift and force the city's hand to, to move necessarily, it was more to give the city leverage. Because we knew with the rate caps that we had negotiated back in '15 to kind of give the city some budget certainty, that the health insurer is likely to give us that maximum rating, rate increase. So we were likely to get the rate cap without having some sort of leverage. So the idea of going to Quartz to begin with was simply to protect the city and have Dean honestly underwrite the, the plan accordingly. So I just want to put that out there, that the idea behind this to begin was not necessarily to have, to make the recommendation for the city to move.
It's just Dean couldn't match the number.
Correct.
When Quartz came in. So, next slide, please. So Dean Health Plan, after the negotiations like Damian was talking about, dropped their number to 5.11. So that gives you the savings up there and the annual number that we just talked about at 1.5. Quartz placed an extremely aggressive bid, you guys have all seen the numbers, and one of the things that we looked for was a big player in the Stoughton area when we were trying to drive those numbers down with Dean. And Group Health is not an option for us because our employees would have to travel out of the area, so we were looking for something that was local. And Quartz happens to be that because they're tied into the UW system. So I just want to be really clear, if you haven't seen the commercials, Quartz is Unity, which is tied into the UW system. Stoughton Hospital does accept Quartz as well as UW Clinic and the Unity Point Clinic here in town. Next screen. Like we said, Quartz drove the rates down with, with Dean Health, but not to the point that we could give them as our viable option. Total savings with Quartz was 134,663 over the original 8% renewal. Original 8% renewal. And I think this is where people are saying, you guys are inflating the numbers. That's the original renewal. Yep. So Quartz provided a second-year rate cap of 9% as well. Next screen. So two-year savings with Quartz HMO over Dean Health is now over $265,000.
And I'll, I'll just interject there and say, that's assuming, again, that we were to get a rate cap increase from Dean Health Plan next year if we were to stay with them. So we'd stay with them at the 5.1% increase and then we'd receive that 8% rate cap increase for 2019. And this is assuming we moved to Quartz, which is giving us a 4% reduction over current, and then they gave us a 9% increase for 2019. So we're, we're getting kind of complicated there, but that's how we get to that $265,000 number. It's assuming a worst-case scenario from each of those providers.
So we're not being aggressive there, we're actually being, we're being conservative. Next screen. So the Quartz HMO plan design, you're going to ask, well, what did they change? I mean, that doesn't make a lot of sense that you have that much cost savings. They actually decreased our out-of-pocket maximums. If you look on the left, that's the Dean, single at 7150, and on the right is the Quartz single. Again, this was all in your packets. And then the only change that we were going to make is that prescription drug copays, and we would have done that even if we stayed with Dean. And what that does is it continues at the $10 for the generic and then there's an additional $10 on the next two tiers, and then we added in 200 for those formulary drugs. So for plan design, that's it. We had a decrease in cost and then on prescription drugs, for those additional tiers, it went up. Next screen. Options for employees. So the next question is, well, what if I don't want to switch? I don't want to go to a UW doctor, I don't want to be a part of Unity. There is an option. The employees can opt to go with Quartz POS Plan. And what that is, is it allows them to go to their existing Dean or any other provider, doesn't have to be a Dean provider, but they will pay more and they will have deductibles, co-insurance, and higher out-of-pocket. So you can choose to go see your own provider, but you're going to pay more. Kind of looking at it, like I said to you in my letter, a gold plan and a silver plan. Your silver plan would be that POS Plan. Next screen. Our major concern that we talked about for quite a bit of time was the transition for an employee. How does this affect them? And Cottingham and Butler, the city HR, and Quartz, we're going to do all of the heavy lifting for this. We'll have employee education and Quartz does provide a welcome center for employees that are coming over onto their plan. And they meet with the employees and talk about primary care providers and make offers and recommendations as to who they should go with. They will also do the education on the plan design through employee meetings and help them find the new provider. HR is going to handle all of the enrollment, the forms, the communication to Quartz, will do the card distribution, any type of employee support, excuse me, and then question and answers regarding the transition. So we'll be kind of the epicenter for this change, should it occur. Next screen. The hardest part, and I said on here, for some employees, is that they have a relationship with their provider and/or their physician. And they feel comfortable with that provider and they don't want to change. So we understand that and that it can be difficult. And again, that's exactly why we're offering that POS Plan. And as Director McDonald had stated before, we had that same plan available with Dean. We had Dean POS for employees that didn't want to go with the Dean Plan and we did have people that took that option. So I'm showing here in the illustration, 2018 premiums for Quartz, employee portion monthly. Under the Quartz Plan for the HMO, a single employee would pay $16.59 for premium per month. Under the POS Plan, they will pay $79.74 for premium per month. So the difference there is $63.15. Family, 4313, for the HMO, POS at 207, a difference of 164. Again, differences back on there, Rodney? The co-insurance, excuse me, 80% versus a straight $30 copay under the HMO Plan. And then the services are subject to deductible and 80%, 20% co-insurance. So the plan is more expensive, that's why I call it the silver plan, but it does allow the flexibility for the employees to utilize their out-of-network providers should we switch to Quartz.
And then just from a cost perspective, for the city council's perspective, we do, we do provide benchmarking to the city so that they can have an idea of what's fair to charge employees. And CMB does a, a city-county survey for the entire Midwest essentially, and we do a Wisconsin-specific one. Our Wisconsin-specific benchmarks for employee contributions, and this is just on the general plan, is $98 for a single. So if you compare that to the point-of-service plan, you're still $20 below that for what the city of Stoughton's offering. And from a family perspective, our benchmark is $345 per month. So again, we're still well below benchmark, almost $140 below benchmark there. So if an employee absolutely needs to go to someone outside of the UW system, they can and they can do it at a cost that we feel is fair to them if we're comparing the benefits to, to other cities and counties throughout the state.
Yep. So again, that's government to government. Next slide. So our question is here, why would we make the change? And we understand that disruption factor, it's major, as it affects the majority of our employees that would be shifting from the Dean providers and, and/or shifted from the Dean providers two years ago. Keeping in mind that, again, it was 5% of our employee base that switched from Dean to another carrier. Quartz providers do have that local presence, which is very important to us to maintain that partnership with our local clinics and hospital. that partnership with our local clinics and hospital. But unfortunately, like I talked about early on, the insurance market is what's driving these types of changes. There's just not stability. Affordable Care Act and the purchasing of different companies here are causing these changes. I'm going to speak here, savings are very rare when it comes to health insurance renewals. You're typically seeing increases of 15%. So, us being able to offer savings is pretty incredible. Again, looking at a savings of $265,000 over two years by making the change. So, the question is, is the city of Stoughton in a financial position where we can pass on this type of savings? And that's what I'm asking you. Next slide. Just an illustration here to show you the monthly medical plan rates, and I had this in the packet I sent out this afternoon. Again, showing the employer portion at the bottom. I bolded that, just so you can see what the city's paying per month for the single and the family plans there. Shows the point-of-service, and then it also shows the standard HMO plan. Next screen. This slide here just shows an illustration, again, of line-by-line, if an employee's part-time or full-time, the difference between the HMO and the point-of-service, comparing 2017 Dean rates to 2018 Quartz. And you will notice that there's a decrease in the premium that both the employer and the employee pay. The employees' portion, obviously, is smaller because they're only paying 3% of the total premium, but there is a deduction. And when it comes to giving increases and looking at what total cop statements are, we're not increasing another cost coming out of their pocket. We're actually decreasing that. Next slide. So, the advantages of making the change, while most employees are facing an increase in premiums, with this change, our employees are going to have a minor decrease in the monthly medical premium. That's more money in their pockets, like I just said. Plan design changes, many employers have moved to or are moving towards a cost-sharing model, which is exactly what Damian was talking about with those higher premiums. They also have higher co-pays, they have co-insurance and deductibles, similar to our POS system. And our Quartz HMO Plan has primarily co-pays and 100% on our preventative services. So, there's no change in our medical coverage if we make this change over to Quartz, other than the provider. And then, like I talked about with the prescription, the generic is going to remain at 10 because we're trying to push our employees to use those generics. We do have steerage in our plan. But to be market-competitive and be able to cover our costs with prescriptions, we had to add the additional $10 to the next two tiers, and then the specialty or formulary at $200. Next slide. One of the things we need to keep in mind as we go through this process, I know when Damian gives those market numbers, you're like, oh, my goodness, we're well below that. Well, when you look at market competitiveness, we've started our Springstead study and identified our wage ranges, but our employees are not all typically high in those wage ranges. In fact, if you remember, two years ago, we had to move some employees just to minimum. So, in order for me to retain and attract staff, we need to have an excellent benefit package. And I think by what we're proposing here, we have that, to be able to retain and attract. We're giving an option that if the employee doesn't want to take the gold plan, we have a silver plan. So, next slide. Does anyone have questions for us?
Alderman Borzma.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say I'm going to support this. We talked at length about this in our personnel meeting this last week. And I just wanted to also commend both Damian and AJ for keeping on top of this. I think that it's really helpful to the city and also ultimately to the employees of the city to watch the numbers, and he really did that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Elder Person Hirsch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to commend you guys for doing a great job and finding some savings. With that said, because Dean is so prevalent here in Stoughton, and moving them over to Quartz, there are some doctors here, is there, if, is, did Quartz indicate that if we go with their plan, they might move some of their more doctors over to their clinic, so, you know, the citizens don't have to go so far out to Madison to get primary care?
Yeah. So, we did have a conversation with Quartz about that. Just to take a step back, and I will address your question. Quartz is a combination of what you probably are accustomed to hearing as Unity Health Plan and Physicians Plus. So, they merged back with, about a year ago, and now they are operating as one entity under a new name of Quartz Benefits. So, with that, yes, Quartz is going through a situation right now where they have a doctor here locally who recently retired, and they have another one who's moving to a different clinic. So, they are going through a restaffing period. If they, so, we're going to be losing two doctors, or they're losing two doctors here shortly. If they have the city come onboard, there's going to be three additional primary care physicians who are brought onto that clinic. So, not only are they going to be replacing the two that are going out the door right now, but they're going to be adding an additional one. So, that should ease some of the, I guess, backup that there might be for a primary care physician at this point at that Quartz facility, or at the UW Clinic facility.
Thank you.
Donna and I met this morning with Terry Brenney, who is the head of Stoughton Hospital as well, and talked with him about the specialty and trying to drive more business that direction as well. So, they're well aware of the partnership and are going to be working with Unity and UW more to try to enhance that relationship.
Okay. Thank you. Elder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure why AJ, you had some stuff on the screen that I don't see here. I don't see it in the packet.
She sent it in an email.
Sent it in an email?
Yeah, sent her.
Well, the other question I have is, with the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Department Chief, is there any effects here with that?
Actually, no. I think the only thing that they're allowed to bargain for are the copayments, and, I mean, the premiums.
No. I went back and read the agreement that we have, and they are not able to negotiate that.
No, but from a negotiating standpoint, it is a subject of bargaining. They haven't yet, but it is a subject of bargaining. And the only thing they can bargain for is the copayment rates, or the premium rates. I'm sorry.
That's not what I read in the contract, but I'll go back.
There is no language in our contract, but there is.
So, to answer that question, no, there's no language in the contract.
It doesn't affect anything currently.
Collective bargaining law is what.
Right. And that's what I'm referring to, is collective bargaining law allows them to bargain for. And again, our premiums here are so low, that's why they haven't addressed it in any contract language in the past.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to vote by roll call. Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Oh. Can I say something?
No.
Not during the vote period, I'm sorry. I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
That motion carried on a vote of 10 to 0 with one abstention. Okay. Thank you. And then again, since we have a couple of items that are related, and we've got AJ and Damian up there at the stand, let's move a little backwards to Agenda Item 13, Resolution 142, 2017, from our Personnel Committee. I'm challenging Tom tonight.
Did you say 13?
13, please.
Public Works presents Resolution 142, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the addition of the checkup-plus benefit to the city's current dental plan, effective January 1st of 2018. Personnel Committee approved 5-0 on September 18th, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Mieske, second by Borzma. Elder Person Mieske.
After review of the dental plan, there were some adjustments made that were to bring the city in line with other communities that offer dental plans, and it was approved.
Thank you. AJ.
I had sent a memo out on this one, as well, as incorporated into the health plan. Just as a reminder, this one here is making sure that our employees are at least having the opportunity to, twice a year, get their preventative care services done with their dental. So, our plan has a maximum cost of up to $1,000, and typically what we're seeing out in the marketplace is $1,500. Rather than open that up and let an employee have anything done and have them skip those preventives, by adding the checkup-plus to this, we're steering and making sure that the employees are utilizing those services for preventative care. Damian, anything else you want to add?
No. The whole thought process behind it is, rather than increasing everyone's maximum by $500, is we're going to give them an additional benefit that doesn't count towards their current deductible or out-of-pocket, and hopefully they're able to get up to about $1,500 in dental services on an annual basis.
All right. Thank you. Elder Person Hirsch.
Oh, I was just curious, are all the, is there a specific dentist group that this goes through?
Yes, we use Delta Dental for our dental plan.
Is there any dentists in Stoughton that?
Yep, that was included in the letter that I had sent out, where I talked about Delta and Delta Premier. So, what we've done is we've tasked Cottingham and Butler in looking at our Stoughton dentists, just to make sure that they're falling into the deeper discount, which really doesn't apply to this, but I wanted to make sure that everybody had read that and was aware that we're working with our Stoughton dentists. Again, that's one of our primary goals, is that partnership with our local dental providers, as well as healthcare.
Excellent. Thank you. Any additional questions regarding checkup-plus? I think there was something in here that talks about, no, I'm sorry, that's dependent age. Did you want to talk?
Separate resolution.
That's a separate resolution. All right. Never mind. So, we've got a motion by Elder Person Mieske, second by Borzma, to approve Resolution 142, 2017. We will vote by roll call. Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Motion carried on a vote of 11 to 0. Thank you. Again, that backup to that dependent age is under Resolution, I'm sorry, Agenda Item 11, Resolution 140, 2017. No, that's not it. That's a drive-up. We don't want to talk about drive-ups right now. 14.
14.
14, thank you. Agenda Item 14, Resolution 143 of 2017. Please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Personnel presents Resolution 143, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the recommendation to move, to change the dependent age on dental plan from all dependents to age of 26, to cover only eligible dependents ages 19 through 25 and full-time student status. Personnel Committee approves 5-0 on September 18th, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Elder Person Mieske, second by Elder Person Borzma. Elder Person Mieske.
The resolution is self-explanatory.
AJ.
This makes it market-competitive. When you look out there at other plans, and Damian can back this up, this is the way plans are typically designed. When the Affordable Care Act went through, there was a separation between the healthcare and the dental. And this is the way dental has always been set up, is the 19 to 25. So, I'm thinking what happened here is potentially something, you didn't have an HR director at the time, so maybe it was combined. I'm not sure what occurred there, but this would take it to what you typically see at other organizations for coverage in regards to dental. Damian, anything else to add?
No. Yeah, so, the idea was kind of a give-and-take here. We're giving an extra benefit with the checkup-plus, and how do we still kind of control that cost to make it as cost-neutral as possible for the city? One way of doing that was kind of restricting the eligibility back to what I'll call normal by moving it to that 19 or full-time student up to 25. So, as AJ mentioned, when the Affordable Care Act forced everyone's hand to have dependents on up to age 26, a lot of times, you know, cities and employers decided that they were going to mirror those eligibility benefits with their dental and medical. But there's really no reason to force that issue. So, moving it back to what we're proposing makes sense, especially when we're adding the checkup-plus.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Elder Person Hirsch.
Yes, and AJ knows that I'm going to ask. I guess I have a problem with, you know, discriminating against kids 19 to 25 that decide not to be a full-time student, that may be a half-time student, that are working at a job that doesn't provide any insurance or dental, or kids that decided to take a few years off to, you know, volunteer somewhere. I think it's, I would like to know the numbers of how many, and I know AJ has these numbers because I've asked her, how many students this is going to affect and what the cost difference is. I mean, I don't like this kind of, if you go to college, you get a benefit. If you don't go to college, you get deterred.
There's a total of 27 dependents between the ages of 19 and 26. We do not know if they're full-time students or not. So, I can't give you anything beyond that we know that there's 27 people that fall into this category. I don't know if they're full-time students or not. So, I can't answer the cost of that end either, because I can't predict not knowing, as we talked about, how many of those are full-time. But there are 27 people that fall in that category.
So, we don't know if there's ever going to be savings or not? Because if they're all full-time students, we have no savings. And so, it might be just one student that you're not going to, or one child you're not going to afford.
Correct. That's why it says estimated on the resolution. When you look at that and you're running the averages.
The estimated cost impact, so, we can look at it two ways, right? We can assume everybody's in college and going to remain on the plan, and we can assume the inverse, everybody is going to be off because no one's a full-time student. So, it was a 5% reduction if we assumed absolutely every dependent between 19 and 26 were to be moved off the plan. And in working alongside Delta Dental, we came to a percent and a half as a fair estimate of how claims can be impacted based on, you know, the thought process that we were being conservative here with the 1.5% and not trying to project something that's not going to happen.
So, in dollars, what is the actual 1.5% that we'd actually be saving?
About $1,000.
So, we'd only be saving $1,000 by going, dropping the 19 to, so, $1,000 versus, you know, supporting all the kids?
I think it's still full-time students, if I'm, it's still, still full-time students. That doesn't change. I don't believe, Elder Person Hirsch.
Full-time student status is not part of our plan right now, at all. So, it's not a qualifier.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I was wrong.
So, yes, it's $1,000. Keeping in mind, the city pays 100% of the dental premium. There's no employee contribution.
So, it's $1,000 per student? I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the $1,000 is. $1,000 savings or $1,000 per student?
So, if we take, if we take a percent and a half of the totals, the city's total spend on dental in a given year, we're estimating that to be about $1,000. So, if we, like, so, over the course of 2018, let's say we're projecting $70,000 in total spend on the dental plan, we take a percent and a half of that, we're coming, we're backing into $1,000.
So, it'd only be $69,000 that we would be paying?
Correct. There's a $1,000 savings.
Correct.
So, $1,000, but yet you might be dropping 15, 20 people off the plan.
Well, if that many people drop off the plan, obviously, the savings increases.
It's greater. We're just giving you an estimate, a conservative estimate.
I know that Elder Person Johnson also had a question.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments?
I got a question.
Elder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's saying, changing it from to age 26, what was it before?
According to the history that I have, it's been up to, when the Affordable Care Act started, it went up to the age of 26. I can't tell you what your plan was before that. I'm assuming it was up to 19 to 25 full-time status because that's what you see, but I can't tell you that.
26 is the federal law.
For medical.
Not for dental.
Not for dental, okay.
And that was in the memo to you as well.
Okay.
Ask Elder Person Hirsch.
I have a question. What does the staff feel about changing that to full-time status only for their dependents?
I haven't had any feedback on that.
I guess personally, seeing as that doesn't seem to be that big of a savings, I'd rather have, we not discriminate between dependents of people that go to school versus not. And so I'll be voting no on this.
Okay. Elder Person Boersma.
Just to point out to Alder Hirsch, that if a person is working versus going to school, that's a different, that's a different category, and, you know, there's likelihood that they will be working. There is also a likelihood that if they're working full-time, rather than going to school full-time, they might be able to avail themselves of an employee plan at that point in their life. So it doesn't make sense to, I think, you know, I mean, I think there's a legitimate reason why if somebody's in school, they should potentially get dental insurance versus working when they might get their insurance through an employer. So I will be certainly voting for this plan.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I guess I'd like to rebut that, because if you don't, if you only have a high school degree and you haven't gone to college as a full-time student, the likelihood you're going to get a job that actually provides insurance is pretty unlikely. And so we are actually, actually creating more of a hardship for a family that the kid is only working. And if they do decide to have a job that does have insurance, then the family can opt out of that dependent probably being on that family plan, right?
Say that again.
So if, just like any of the students, if that dependent doesn't, gets a job and has their own insurance, we don't have to pay for them, right?
Correct, if they get their own insurance, yes.
Correct, but there's no incentive for an employee of the city to do that because they don't pay for the dental insurance. So, if you're not paying for the benefit, why would you go out of the way to move your dependent child off the plan? And because the city's self-funded, I know we're giving you an estimated impact of $1,000, but there's no way for us to know what that impact is except to look back after kind of open enrollment and figure out how many of these members, dependent children, kind of moved off the plan and then give you an...
So keep in mind with what Damian and I were whispering back here, we were talking about the self-funding. And this plan is self-funded, so that's $1,000 in premium savings. But keep in mind, each of our employees have up to $1,000 that we cover. So that's 27 lives that we are insuring there with a cost of up to $1,000 for their coverage, plus adding the Checkup Plus on top of that. So the savings overall is much greater, but this is just premium that we're talking about here.
Thank you. Elder Person Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. So last year we had this in place, correct?
Last year we had which in place?
The, that we covered the...
To age 26.
Correct.
Yes.
How much did we spend, do you know, for premiums, everything for the individuals?
I can tell you total plan cost through August, which is our expenditures that we have because we're self-funded, was $54,635 is what we had spent.
For just these, this group?
No, I can't pull that group out separate.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Alright.
Not seeing questions. We'll vote by roll call.
I got a question.
I'm sorry. Elder Person Engelberger.
So what happens if this fails? What's the result if it fails as opposed to it passes?
You'll have just additional costs within your plan, so we will continue to keep those individuals on. We're self-funded, so we're paying 100% of that. And then if that person uses their $1,000, you paid $1,000 per person for coverage. And then also you've added on top of that, as you approved in the last resolution, the coverage for those two checkups. So you're talking 27 bodies times $1,000 in premium plus $1,000 for dental coverage, meaning utilization when they go to the dentist.
Thank you. Elder Person Hirsch and then Kittleson.
And just to remember, if all 27 go to college or are students, it's a mute point. They're paying for it. So if they all go to college, and they might now have incentive to go to college because they're paying for their dental, which I highly doubt, but it's, it's just, you know, it's a wash. We don't know how much savings are actually going to be.
Elder Person Kittleson.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to vote no for this, and the biggest reason that I'm going to say is you're always asking for retention. How are we going to give benefits to our employees? This to me is a pretty simple benefit. It's a small dollar amount possible, so that just adds to your coffers for retention.
We are always looking for ways to try to enhance the package and also bring a possible savings to you, so that's what we're doing here, doing our due diligence.
Thank you. Elder Person Mieske.
Call the question.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to call the question. There's no debate on calling the question, and I've got to see if it's by roll call or not though, I'm sorry.
Thirds?
Pardon me?
Two thirds.
Okay, we'll vote by roll.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
No.
Kittleson.
No.
Voting on to vote to call the question.
On whether or not you want to vote.
Call the question. Oh, call the question.
This is call the question, yes.
I wanted to make that clarification.
Because we're going to vote anyway next.
Voting to call the question.
Okay, then yes.
Okay.
That wasn't clear.
Do you want to change yours to yes?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, just wanted to clarify.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson. Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
No.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trull.
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of 10 to 1.
Thank you. Are there more questions regarding Resolution 143-2017?
No, you cannot do that.
You can't do that. You can't do that.
Give us call to the question.
When you call the question, you call to vote.
Right.
Right.
There's no more questions.
So you can't ask any more questions?
I'm sorry. It is time to vote. You're right. I apologize. Well, I make mistakes too, alright? We all make mistakes. Alright, we'll vote by roll.
Hirsch.
No.
Kittleson.
No.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trull.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of 8 to 3.
Alright, thank you. Thank you AJ and Damian. So we are going to step back. Beginning of new business is Agenda Item Number 5, Ordinance 13 of 2017, comes from our Community Affairs Council Policy Committee. Elder Person Reeves.
Or, and/or redevelopment authority.
And/or, you're right. You're right. You're sitting next to each other. You can decide.
The redevelopment authority brings forth Ordinance 13-27, admitting Section 2-535 of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the composition of the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority. And this is for a first reading.
Thank you. Ordinance 14 of 2017, comes from our Planning Commission for a first reading. Elder Person Trull.
Thank you. The Planning Commission brings forth Ordinance 14-27, an ordinance permitting the zoning classifications of 314 West Main Street in the City of Stoughton from PV Plan Business to MR24 Multi-Family Residential. Again, this is first reading, and for everyone's interest, this again is the former Marathon site.
Alright, thank you.
Got a question.
Yes, Elder Person Engelberger.
Just a question for Alder Scott.
Alder Scott.
Alder Scott.
Yeah, he's over there.
Alder Trull. You know, I wonder why, why is this an ordinance change? Why, why is it, or maybe for Rodney, why isn't an ordinance change, why isn't it just...
A rezoning.
I mean, an ordinance changes when you're, you're changing, like, making a new zoning category or something. That's not what this is, is it?
You're rezoning it to a different district.
You're just rezoning to something we already have in our zoning code, isn't it?
Yes, it is, but it's to a different zoning district. Zoning changes are done by ordinance, not by resolution.
Okay. I mean, is that part of the state law that it has to be done that way?
That's the way we've done it here, and I can speak to the state law, but that's the...
I mean, to me, I would think it more, it would be a resolution as opposed to an ordinance.
Well...
Because, I mean, we're basically changing a property from one section of the zoning code to a different section of the zoning code, right?
Correct. The public process that's involved in an ordinance adoption for the zoning code is slightly different than a resolution if it was adopted by... There's a public hearing process as part of an ordinance amendment for the zoning, and therefore that adds the public participation. It changes the standards for what is applicable to a property, setbacks, uses, and therefore you have to find consistency with a number of things. And I think that's the burden that's placed on a change to a different zoning classification.
Just a question. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Elder Person Bartlett.
Ken, has this been reviewed by the city attorney for this change? Just curious, because that one change of changing to composition of one council member, one of the commissioners shall be a member of the city council. The state statute says that two members shall be city council members. Can we even reduce that to one when the state statute says it shall be two?
He's in one back. I think we're on the next...
I'm sorry.
I think you moved ahead. Yeah. But let's move ahead. Elder Person Bartlett's ready to move ahead.
No, there's one behind.
Behind, yeah.
Behind.
One behind.
There's one behind.
Alright, we're all good. Our ordinance, Agenda Item 7, Resolution 136-2017, comes from Public Safety. Elder Person Trull.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth Resolution 136-2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the continuation of the current agreement with the City of Madison for the Joint Records Management System, and I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Trull, second by Jensen. Elder Person Trull.
The chief can certainly answer more questions, but effectively this continues our ongoing relationship with Madison. Again, multiple municipalities share their records, and this just continues that relationship.
That's correct.
Alright. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Agenda Item 8 is Resolution 137 of 2017, coming from our Public Works Committee. Elder Person Jensen.
I think, Your Honor, Resolution 137-2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the contract extension with John's Disposal Service, Inc. until December 31, 2024, for collection of residential garbage, bi-weekly collection of recycling, monthly collection of bulk items, and weekly collection of trash downtown. And I would so move.
I second.
There's a motion by Jensen, second by Boersma. Elder Person Jensen.
Yeah, it's, I was, basically it's a good deal, and we just wanted to make sure we locked into it and we're locked into it for 2024, which I think is a great, great thing to do, so. Approved by Public Works, 4-0, so recommend approval.
Director Abear is here to give us some, some details.
So our contract with John's Disposal is actually up at the end of 2018, and they offer to extend the contract an extra four years and hold the rate for 2018, or to extend the contract for an extra six years and hold the rates the same for 2018 and 2019. And what they also did is for no extra charge, they'll be collecting trash downtown that our city staff currently does. And over the course of a year, they'll save us roughly 150 hours of employee time. So that's a huge savings to us as far as, as our time to devote to something else in the community, and also that we lock in our rates for two years for our citizens.
Sure. Elder Person Boersma.
Yeah, Brett, thank you. And I just wondered if you've had a chance to sort of review how the citizens of Stoughton have done with this, this company, and whether there's a lot of complaints or a lot of positives or whatever, so.
Yep, and we definitely took that into account when we brought this forward for a proposal. We've had very few complaints, and the minor complaints that we do receive, we pass those on to John's, and they take care of those almost immediately. So we've had very favorable feedback when it comes to the program, and as far as our relationship with John's, it's been very positive the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elder Person Hirsch.
Yes, I mean, I think it's a great deal, but, so we have a rate lock for up until 2019, but then till 2024, what is the max that it can be increased that...
Through our contract, we are protected based on the Consumer Price Index for the Midwest region, and typically that's about 1% to 3%, so they cannot surpass that. So they can't give us a rate freeze for two years and say, oh, we're going to jack the price up 10%. They can't do that, so we're protected.
So it's either 1% or 3%?
Depends on the Consumer Price Index for that year.
Okay.
Typically, we've seen in the last couple of years about 1% to 3%, so that's what we can probably anticipate.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions?
Elder Person Kittleson.
I don't think you brought up earlier in the meeting, you talked about the fuel surcharge. That's a huge one.
Yep, so if we lock into a long-term agreement, in the contract, there's no stipulation which would allow them to add in a fuel surcharge. In six years, who knows what gas prices are going to be, or fuel prices. So they essentially can't come back at us and say, we're going to tack on an extra X percent for a fuel charge, a fuel surcharge. So we are, to me, locked in and protected for the long term.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Provide healthcare.
Sure. Elder Person Johnson.
This is kind of out there, but right now with everything that we're picking up, and I know there's some other communities are doing different incentives to eliminate the amount of items that are going into the garbage. Are doing, as far as cost of how we're charged, how are we charged actually as a city? I don't know.
So all of our citizens are charged a fee per month. Right now that fee is $13.15 for both recycling and trash collection. Also, they get one bulky item collection per month, which is for couches and bigger items that won't fit in your trash bin.
So as far as a city, all in all, do they, I'm just wondering how they compute what we're going to be given? Is it, like, if we reduced our garbage, okay, got it, thank you.
Flat rate, so if our, essentially if our tipping fees, their tipping fees went up, they can't come back to the city and say, our costs went up, city, you need to pay us more. We're locked in, so we're protected on all angles, really.
Thank you.
And actually, our diversion rate's gone up, so that means we're actually recycling, as a community, we're actually recycling more today than we did a couple of years ago. So that means people are starting to recycle more, and I think that's just society, really.
Yep, that's a good thing. Thanks, Brett. Elder Person Kittleson.
I do have a question for you. Maybe you can answer this underneath this contract. If you have a business on Main Street, what are you allowed to put out?
I think it's a 64-gallon cart.
Of one, and then a recycle bin every other week?
96 gallons.
Okay. And then bulky items would be?
Once per month.
Once per month, but you could place out whatever you want because it's plural items?
Yes, yep.
We could, kind of have a mess there.
You could, yeah. And typically, at the end of the month, there is quite the mess with move-outs. But they do come through with what they call a bulky truck. It's a rear-loading truck, and they're pretty expeditious when it comes to collecting the trash. As far as an Ordnancecope, maybe Rodney can help me, they can't set out those types of things for more than how many days or...
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
Thank you. I've got it. Elder Person Jensen and then Johnson.
Just to clarify, it's not anything that we can put out. You cannot put out electronics.
I can't hear you, Greg.
Correct. So, yeah, it's only the things that they would collect, so electronics, they won't collect, hazardous waste, they won't collect. Their website actually showcases all the stuff that they do collect, so it's things like that, you know, things that are collectible or things that can go to the landfill are collectible.
Thank you. Elder Person Johnson and then Kittleson.
Alright, thank you, Director, for the trash talk.
You're welcome.
I was waiting to say that.
Elder Person Kittleson.
The question I have, earlier in the previous meeting, you said microwaves could be placed out, so you're not sure if they can or can't be?
At the curb, yes.
Okay, so, but TVs cannot be placed?
TVs, electronics cannot, but we do have a site on our, at the Public Works facility that does take in electronics, big TVs. There's a charge for that. It's $10 per tube TV or a computer monitor. We will take in, like, computer towers and keyboards for no additional charge.
This might be a good time to utilize our tiny, like, our togetherness with utilities, maybe do some kind of insert for this so people are aware of what we can and can't.
Sure, and we actually just partnered with a Girl Scout to put out some propaganda on our website, and she's also working on getting some things out to the community. So we can, we'll take that avenue, and we can also work with... So, we can, we'll take that avenue, and we can also work with Director Cardenas.
Thank you, Brett. Further comments? We'll vote by roll call. Kittleson.
Yes.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mijaski.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of 11 to 0. Thank you. Resolution 138 of 2017 comes from our Planning Commission. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth Resolution 138, approving a conditional use permit to allow a church use, Calvary Gospel Church, at 1501 East Main Street, and Plan Commission recommends approval, and I would also move approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
Again, this is the former, uh...
Chalet.
Uh, chalet, north chalet facility on the city's east side, and they will be, the church will be using basically the front part of it as a part of this, if approved.
Whatever. That's a great reuse of a building that's been looking for a reuse for a bit now. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Resolution 139 of 2017 also comes from our Planning Commission. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth Resolution 139, 2017, approving a conditional use permit to allow the expansion and site improvements for the automotive repair use, the Conant Automotive at 1324 U.S. Highway 51, and I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
I want to commend Joe Conant for bringing forth this, I hope you see some of the information in the packet, in terms of, of his, his plan to improve the building. He really will, as a part of this, if, if approved, will line up the entrance onto the property more appropriately to King Street across the street. Access will be from the, the backside, in terms of the overhead door, and frankly, he is, he has been, I think he's very excited about the opportunity to improve the look and expand that building. I would encourage your support.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Nope.
Rodney has a picture for this one?
I, I don't know what you want to see, but this is an elevation.
Is there a landscape plan with this?
There was. I don't have it right now, but maybe it's on.
I have comments related to landscaping.
Yeah, I was looking for two.
Part of the conditions, you can see that number 17 indicates a requirement for details related to landscaping plan be submitted. I don't know that the commission spoke specifically on that topic, but there is conditions that were placed on it as part of the, the site plan review.
Seeing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
I think you. Resolution 140 of 2017 also comes from our Planning Commission. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. And this is, is item 11, which has nothing to do with either dental care or other health issues this evening.
Wrong number.
The, the Plan, the Plan Commission brings forth Resolution 140, 2017, approving a conditional use permit to allow an in-vehicle service use donation drive-up canopy for goodwill at 1780 U.S. Highway 51, and I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had a fairly extensive discussion about this drive-up at the Plan Commission. Again, goodwill will be locating between Pick 'n Save and the Tractor Supply in the former Walmart facility, and in working with the building owner, I think we've come up with, with a, an improvement on what was originally proposed for the canopy and the donations out front. Effectively, we had significant concerns about continuing to have a sidewalk across the front of the building, and also having an area where the drop-offs can happen and still provide a, a normal fire lane as, across the front of the building. So, the goodwill folks are confident, they've, they've used this similar type of, of drop-off and stacking or queuing line in other facilities, and so, we would encourage you to, to support this use and allow them to, to go into that building.
Thank you. Rodney, did you want to just show, show the plan?
Yeah, this, this indicates the, the Pick 'n Save facility is located on the right side of this location. Tractor Supply is, is previously have been acted on and encompasses this portion of the building. Goodwill be, will be in the center portion. The area that Alder Trul spoke of was related to this area for their drop-off location, and that's the substance of the, the conditional use application for this item.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Just Alderperson Hirsch.
Scott, you were saying there used to be a sidewalk that go, went straight across, so now, is there a diversion, or is a sidewalk eliminated?
What's actually happening as a part of this is the existing sidewalks, actually as, as this drawing, are being enlarged on the, to, to really pull that, and make it more defined, and then we also have a pathway, a sidewalk immediately adjacent to the building. We had discussions about how the grade was going to be coming in there, so that should someone want to walk from Tractor Supply to Pick 'n Save or whatever, we were concerned initially about how the doorways will work, and, and again, realizing that there's traffic coming through there. But effectively, what also happened as a part of it is, is the two corners are, are expanded, and so the sidewalk is actually lengthened there to have, again, a more, more defined access point to get cars out of traffic, out of the, the fire lane.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger, and then Boersma.
I was just going to add to what Scott said, they had, like, three feet in front of the building for a sidewalk, for people to walk right through there, and basically, what we did is we made them move that out, so it's, I believe, six feet, and then it moved the car lanes over, and the safety factor to have, so people could walk between, you know, from one building to the other, as opposed to walking right in through the lane of traffic.
Thank you. I have Alderperson Boersma, and then Johnson.
Scott, I realize that this is minutia, but I use that post office box right there in front of the building all the time. I'm wondering if, if the post office has been alerted to this, or if they're going to move it, or what?
I have no clue, so, I, I have no reason to believe that they're taking it out. I would think there's still space there, and I would anticipate it would be there, but I can't speak.
A lot, a lot of people have used that over the years, and, you know, I just, I think it would be whoofus to at least have somebody talk to the post, the post office.
If I can look down and ask Rodney to touch base with the property owner and, and make sure that request is, is passed on.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. And Scott, Mike showed it to me, and it made more sense, but is there going to be some type of poles or something so that cars, if it gets slippery or anything?
Yes, in fact, the, the discussion in terms of the, the canopy, if you actually look at the, the, within the packet, there are a couple of poles that are being out there that support the canopy. They also are putting pipe bollards to protect those as well.
All right, thank you. Seeing no additional questions. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Resolution 141 of 2017 comes from Alderperson, comes from Alderperson Trul. It does, but it's also from our Planning Commission.
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth Resolution 141, approving a conditional use permit to allow an in-vehicle sales and service use fuel station for Pick 'n Save at 1750 U.S. Highway 51, and I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
Again, if you look at the packet, what you'll see is that, again, the property owner has brought forth a proposal to have a limited service gas station or fueling station that will actually be located out near Highway 51 and be located between two existing, the two existing access points on the west side of that parking lot. Issues that, that the Plan Commission did address and, and try and, and raise questions about, making sure we still have enough parking within that lot, and staff indicates that even with, with this, we will still be over the required parking spaces. You may also recall that previously, we'd had discussions about the landscaping out in front, and they have integrated a lower, a lower-height landscape pad out in, between the, the proposed pump aisles and Highway 51. So, again, Plan Commission recommended unanimously that we move forward with this.
Thank you. Alderperson Mijaski.
We got a couple, a couple issues. First one being that I hope, at least this one has a landscape plan, not like the previous resolution, and hopefully, in the future, the, the resolutions that come forth when it comes to changes will have those in there, otherwise, they should not be coming to council without it, because we do not have all the information. That's one thing. Number two, there is an aggressive plan for changing of the landscaping. However, with that, we do have standards for tree sizes that was voted on by this council, and I would make a motion to amend this, that the trees that are being planted, that are, that are required to be planted on this plan be determined by the city forester to, to comply with our standards for space and, spacing overhead wires.
I'll, I'll second that.
And then my next, oh.
Let's go ahead and vote on this motion first. Okay. Yep, did you have a comment to the motion?
Well, I just have a question for Rodney. Are, are they in compliance with the size of the trees here or not?
I don't know that this, the tree spacing for the onsite landscaping does not dictate the size, I believe. I believe, I'm thinking the reference might be related to terrace tree plantings. I think the onsite landscaping plan was compliant with the, the standards of the landscaping requirements.
Because, I mean, I do recall seeing landscaping plans at Plan Commission for this, and I'm assuming they, they complied with our, I'm assuming they complied with our, our ordinances. Am I wrong?
I, I wasn't there for the debate. I don't believe that they were wrong. I think the landscaping onsite meets the requirements of the code. I, I think our staff review letter in here indicates such. If you'll allow me a chance to review that.
Yep, well, let's give Rodney a chance to look that up, and then I can go right down the line, it looks like. Boersma, and then Hirsch, Kittel, and Kittleson.
I wasn't finished, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I wanted to say.
To the motion.
To the motion.
To the motion.
And I just, I just want to, the reason why I second this is I, I think that we are trying to make good use of our new forester, and I think he's done a great job so far, and I think he should be approved of, trees that are planted, and as much as we can within the city, especially in new developments like this.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch, comment to the motion?
Well, I'm commenting with Mijaski, Alderperson Mijaski, that it seems like the only tree that is going into this whole landscaping is a ginkgo tree, as opposed to any other landscaping tree that isn't even native to Wisconsin, but, um, yeah, I mean, my, I'm in agreement with Alderperson Mijaski. It seems like the landscaping plan is only really going to be visible during maybe six months out of the year and not the whole time, so it's very limited. I mean, I would have loved to have seen more bushes, or, I mean, even low bushes that would be visible all year round, as opposed to just having landscaping that's only visible six months out of the year, because it's all grasses and plants that are in bloom in the summer most of the time, except for one little stretch of evergreens.
I, I can respond to the, our staff review letter found in the packet, item number 23 speaks specifically to terrace trees, indicating they would need to be required pursuant to 10-2 parent eight, but working through the Public Works Director for that aspect of it, and item number, sorry, the other item, there's another item on here related to landscape surface ratio, and the points are compliant, the minimum, number nine, minimum landscape surface ratio is 25%, and it meets that requirement. So, the onsite is meeting the requirement. I think the reference to the terrace trees is something that would need to be worked through with the Public Works folks and the related, relationship to 10-2, which is ordinance, an ordinance requirement.
Thank you, Rodney. Alderperson Johnson. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Kittleson.
All right, you guys were talking about landscaping, but I want to go back to the proposed site plan?
Well, the motion is about the landscaping plan. I can put you in queue for...
It's a conditional use permit.
Right, but Alderperson Mijaski has amended that, and I can't repeat it because they didn't write it all down.
Could you tell us what the pending motion is? The proposed amendment?
I have a motion to amend by Mij, by Mijaski, to amend the landscape plan to state that the trees in the plan, as required to be planted by city ordinance, be determined by the city forester and to comply with the city standards for space for overhead wires.
So, we'll continue our discussion on, on the motion on the floor. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you. Isn't that what Rodney just stated on number, item 23 on the letter? I mean, isn't that the same thing we're debating here?
Yeah. The discrepancy is the landscaping plan, the zoning code regulates plantings within the private property. Terrace trees that, that were being discussed are not regulated, regulated by the zoning code. So, the Planning Commission is focused on the zoning code aspects of this site plan and for the onsite landscaping requirements. The terrace trees are required as a public, a Public Works Directive under Chapter 10-2, and not governed by the Planning Commission.
But your note 23, I believe, tells them they need to comply with that, right?
It indicates that they may be required, subject to that section.
So, I mean, I'm not sure why we're voting on this, if, if that's the case. It's already there.
It's currently a motion on the floor for your review, discussion, and vote.
Am I right or wrong?
You may be right.
Yes, President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I guess the question is, is that discussion occurred, or what triggers that? Does the passing of this plan trigger that, or is that something that should have, that conversation is already, or should have already taken place?
Can you, can you see a, a demarcation between where terrace is and where private is?
Sure.
I, I guess the question is, what is the process to have that conversation, and when is it appropriate to occur? It already did with Public Works.
So, essentially, the property line is shown, the property line is, is essentially this black line here. The area to the, to the south of that represents the area that's in the public right of way.
And what is that, and what is that distance?
I, I don't know. I'll say 15 feet. I, I'm guessing, I don't know.
Can we go to the existing landscape?
I don't know if there's an existing landscape.
Actually, just go right there, right, right there, Rodney.
Yeah.
All right.
Those are coniferous trees to be removed, is what it indicates on this plan. These, this one says it's a coniferous tree. This one says an existing shade tree to be removed. This one shows must be an... This one shows, must be an existing shade tree as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we currently have a motion on the floor. I'm going to have Lana read it again so that we know what we're voting on. Lana's going to read the motion so that we know what we're voting on at this time. And then we'll go back to the original motion. Okay.
I guess I never got my question answered. The question was, is, has Public Works?
I don't know the answer.
Don't know, what triggers that?
We communicated the message to the applicant that they need to make contact with the Public Works Director related to terrace tree requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
I would just, I think that's part of the building permit, uh, application process under chapter 10.
There is.
That's my understanding. It's handled administratively. It doesn't come to council.
Right.
Okay. Lana, the motion on the floor, please.
Sure. So, I have a motion to amend by Mieske, to amend the landscape plan to state that the trees in the plan, as required to be planted by city ordinance, be determined by the city forester and to comply with the city standards for space for overhead wires.
All right. Planning Director Shill.
I think it's imperative to understand that the applicant is not in favor of planting high vegetation in this location. I'm not saying it's not appropriate to discuss it. I'm just saying their interest is trying to create visibility to their, their facilities. And I think that message was probably discussed somewhat at, at length in Planning Commission as well.
Yes, it was. Alderperson Mieske.
Although I, I feel for the applicant, clear cutting of an entire street view is not what I consider a good quality move.
Okay. I think we'll vote by roll.
We have so, we have so many fine tree examples on that stretch of the highway. I think we'd be really ashamed to add to that, the collection that we have going right now.
We'll vote by roll.
I got a question.
One, okay.
Yeah. You know, an argument was made by this owner of this property, that they wanted to tear these trees down so they could better see the store, you know, so you could see the signs. Well, and then what did they do? They proposed a gas station right in the middle of the parking lot, you know? So, I mean, you know, which argument are we dealing with here? Just wanted to point that out.
Alderperson Johnson, did you want to speak to the question on the floor?
I just have a question, Your Honor. If I vote yes or no, what am I voting for?
Right. I'll have Lana read the.
Can we read that one more time?
Sure. So, the motion is to amend by Mieske, and it's to amend the landscape plan to state that the trees in the plan, as required to be planted by city ordinance, be determined by the city forester and to comply with the city standards for space for overhead wires.
Let me just, could I ask, so that, the language specifically says that trees that are required to be planted by city ordinance be approved by the city forester. Is that correct? No, that's not what, that's not what the, that's not what the amendment said. That's, that's what that says. That's not, that's not what the amendment, that's not what I wanted in the amendment. I said. Right. So, it's not what you want, is what I, is my point.
Let's clarify that. What did you want to say?
Trees that are, let's say that, that are trees that are been, that are, are planned in this planting plan.
In the landscape plan. In the proposed landscape plan.
In the proposed landscape plan. And then if I might, after she, the clerk is done.
Okay. Can you, could you just state how you want, because I have a motion to amend, to amend the proposed landscape plan to require the city forester to determine appropriate trees and to comply with the city standards for space for overhead wires.
Space and overhead wires.
Space and overhead wires, not for overhead? Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Space and height. How's that?
Okay.
All right. Did everyone hear that?
I need to hear it one more time, please.
You know, there've been a couple of conversations. I'm sorry, you're trying to drag me?
I need to hear it one more time, please.
Okay. A motion to amend, to state, to amend the proposed landscape plan to require the city forester to determine appropriate trees and to comply with the city standards for space and height for overhead wires.
Space and height, you can get rid of, you can get rid of the overhead wires if, because the height will be, the height standard will apply with overhead wires.
All right.
Could I just comment then? So, as I understand it, this is a landscaping plan submitted to comply with our zoning codes requirements, which include a point system. Is that correct?
Yes.
For this? And so, it's a little unclear to me what would happen if this is approved. It's basically delegating and directing the city forester to determine what trees should be planted as, as kind of an alternative to basically allowing the applicant to comply with our ordinance, which has a point system. I think that if the applicant has submitted a plan that meets our ordinance, including our point system, I think that it should be, you know, it should be approved. But maybe I'm still misunderstanding something. But I think the motion, if approved, would direct the city forester to make a determination about what trees should be planted at this site.
Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. And that's really kind of the clarifying question and the reason Alderman Engelberger was asking the question about item 23 within the staff report. Alderman Mieske, I thought when you started the discussion, you were questioning, making sure that we were talking about terrace trees. What the motion, as I believe the way it's, it's being set right now, effectively says, they're showing a couple of, of trees within their landscape plan, and you're now directing the forester to deal with those trees. I guess my belief is, is that if it's the terrace tree discussion, we do still have that called out. They have to bring the plan, they have to meet the terrace trees. So, just so we're, we're clear on, on what the motion is.
Yes.
So, effectively, you want the forester involved in their, their landscape plan, and we still need to deal with terrace trees.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's, oh, okay. Okay. All right. We'll let, we'll vote. We were just ready to vote.
Yeah, I know. I'm just going to say I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
You can vote no.
Planning Director Shill.
I, I'm seeking some clarification so that I understand what, what message we're going to send to whom, whatever the vote is. Right now, their site plan shows four genko trees to be planted as part of their onsite landscaping requirements. That's not discussing or addressing any trees that may or may not be required in the public right-of-way. The way the conversation was, the forester is now going to evaluate those four onsite genko trees as being appropriate to what standard? I, I don't.
I don't know that we have a standard for private.
I'm trying to understand.
Same standards that we apply to this terrace, this terrace trees. It's, it's, it's a really simple, it's a really simple standard. If it, the, the trees are matched to the, to the, to the space in which they're being surrounded by.
Although they're not terrace trees.
Correct.
So, so will there need to be terrace trees in addition to the trees that the forester requires to be onsite?
What does the ordinance say?
Well, yeah, that's a completely separate question, going to be governed by that ordinance, which, so I don't even think we should muddy the waters. That, that what's before the council is a conditional use permit, which includes as one element, a landscaping plan, which, as I understand it, meets the city's specifications in the ordinances.
Right. All right. Does everyone understand the question that we're voting on at this time? Okay. Alderperson Johnson.
So, if I vote yes, I'm voting for the amendment. If I vote no, that's what I needed to, clarification. Thank you.
I think, we'll, we'll try. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right. Let's vote by roll.
Swadley. Borsma.
Aye.
Johnson.
No. Wait a minute. I'm confused, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Can I ask a question? I'm confused. Am I voting for yes or no of the amendment? Or voting yes for the amendment?
You're voting yes.
Yes would be, you're in favor of the amendment.
If you would like the city forester to look at this private landscaping plan, the trees in the plan, and approve them, you would vote yes.
Thank you. Yes.
Reeves.
No.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
No.
Jensen.
Nope.
Trul.
No.
Bartlett.
No.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
No.
The amendment failed on a vote of four to seven.
Takes us back to the original motion, Resolution 141, as motion by Alderperson Trul, second by Alderperson Engelberger.
And I still have the floor.
Alderperson Mieske, yes, you do.
Then, second to this, the last, the last resolution we approved was a, a drive-in service area for, with a canopy for the goodwill. And now, we are adding a, a gap, essentially, a gas station in the parking lot. So, the question I have is, we have substantially changed the parking lot and its configuration by, by a large percentage. Does this now require, does this, does this now kick in the ordinance for street trees in the existing parking lot, now that the parking lot is being substantially changed?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either.
Well, you should, because this is, this is essentially going to be a new parking lot.
Well, they are not redoing the entire parking lot.
Can I just ask for clarification? Now, you were asking about the terrace tree applicability or onsite landscaping? The ordinance, the ordinance requires when a new parking lot goes in, that it, that there's a specific number of tree islands with trees. Or if there's substantial change in a parking lot, that ordinance kicks in for that also, as far as I'm, the way I understand it. I'm asking, does that happen here? And it should, because of the fact that the percentage of that parking lot has changed.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that. I don't think there's a percentage that drives that. You can see the configuration changes of the parking lot in this, this plan. It's, it's reducing the number of stalls on this, this end of the parking area.
And we're still over the required number that's required.
Correct.
So, it's not that we're going to be, we're going to be squeezed for space on this. So, I will make another amendment that, as part of, as part of the approval of this fueling station, that, that tree islands and trees, as required by parking lot ordinance, be installed as part of this new development.
I'm going to wait for you to. All right. Is there a second to that motion? Comments and discussion. Alderperson Trul.
Just a clarification of intent. Are you talking specifically in, in what we'll call this island, this, this, or are you talking about the entire parking lot?
Well, it should be at least that one half that's being, where you have everything from the goodwill west and that entire parking lot to the front.
Does this resolution cover all of that? This resolution is a conditional use permit for the fueling station, not the entire parking lot? I'm asking a question, because I don't know the answer.
Well, I guess my question is, is did the, did Planning Commission consider that?
I think the answer is no.
So, should we, should this be, so then, should this be tabled until such time that it does?
I don't know.
I ask that it be tabled till such time that it does.
Do I second, or? I second.
They can't, no discussion on a motion to table.
So, now, we have a motion to table?
Yep.
So, the Plant Commission considers whether or not a modified landscaping plan is required for the parking lot.
Okay.
I don't think you have a second, do you?
Yes, they do. Alderperson Johnson.
Johnson did.
She's not here.
No, she did. She seconded.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would encourage my, my colleagues to vote no on this. I, I appreciate what, what.
Point of order. You can't, you can't discuss this.
That's true. Thank you. All right. We will vote by roll to table. As soon as Lana's sec here.
Just once, so there's no discussion period, I think.
A motion to table sets aside the pending question temporarily while you conduct other business. Discussion stops.
Let's vote.
Motion to table has its second. Simple majority vote. So, we'll vote by roll as soon as Lana's ready.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
No.
Jensen.
Nope.
Trul.
No.
Bartlett.
No.
Hirsch.
Aye.
No.
Swadley.
No.
Borsma.
No.
Johnson.
Table.
Motion to table.
Oh, aye.
You're a second.
That motion failed on a vote of three to eight.
So, we go back to the motion on the table, which is a motion by Alderperson Mieske, second by Alderperson Johnson. That is a part of the approval process, and that's where my notes are going to go to Lana, because I.
Here with the clerk has.
I don't understand. Okay. Someone has to.
All right. The motion on the floor.
Yep. Got a part of the approval process, tree islands and trees be installed as a part of the new development. And that's, that one, yeah? Why can't we? They're waiting. So, I have the motion to amend to say that part of the approval of this plan require the installation of tree islands and trees per city ordinance in the new development.
What? Is that right?
So, the first, is that correct? Yep.
That was the motion on the floor. Alderperson.
Can you say that one more time?
The motion to amend is that part of the approval of this plan requires the installation of tree islands and trees per city ordinance in this new development.
Parking lot development. I saw Alderperson Borsma. And then, Scott, did you still have comments?
No.
No? Okay. Alderperson Borsma, and then Swadley.
Yeah, just, just a point of, to consider, I'm on Tree Commission, and we have had a number of discussions about parking lots and the importance of trees in parking lots for, especially for shade and, and all that. And I know in our last discussion at Tree Commission, we talked about if we have parking lots, that we should really consider what, what the circumstances are related to that parking lot and whether there should be trees and islands and all that. And I think the Tree Commission was really, was really wanting to get their hands in on this. If there's a, if there's a parking lot, and it's going to be a new parking lot, that we should at least have some input from the Tree Commission on, you know, and, and public work.
So, I guess the definition would be new parking lot and what, what, what designates it a new parking lot versus one that's being.
Right. And I think that that's just been studied. That's just, it's under consideration right now for the Tree Commission. Said, if we have a parking lot, then we should at least look at the issue of trees.
Sure. Thank you. Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, as I understand the motion.
So, as, I understand the motion, we're looking to make sure that we're installing something that's, should already be conforming in our ordinance. Is, is that how I understood that?
I'll tell you, my understanding of the motion is that if it's adopted, then it would be necessary for the Planning Department to make a determination whether or not the change to this parking lot is something that triggers the applicability of.
No.
Landscape island and tree planting requirements. That's my understanding. Then, then if I'm, if that's not correct, then I think the motion needs some work probably, because that's my understanding of it.
It's, it's not for the Planning Department to determine, it's to say that it will follow the ordinance for, for tree plantings and islands for parking lots, if it's, as if it was a new development.
What if the Planning Department determines that those standards do not apply?
There's already standards, then why wouldn't they apply if it's, it's a parking lot?
I thought the discussion started with the question whether the installation of this, uh, service station in the parking lot was something that triggered the applicability of those requirements.
There's, there's no policy for it, so that's why this amendment is there. There's, there's no policy to determine when a parking lot is being renovated or substantially altered. So that's why I asked the question, a percentage. There is no policy.
No, go ahead.
So is the motion intent to say the requirement is being imposed on this parking area to meet the standards, as if it was a new parking lot?
Right.
Is that what the motion is? Okay, that's what I.
If that's, okay, so just, we need to be clear that that's what the motion is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, I heard it was from the goodwill store west?
And, from, 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 from the back and east to west.
Okay.
So, I guess the point I was gonna make, then, and you can give your clarification, is if, if that's our intent, we really need to go through the process of drafting an ordinance or modifying, or whatever we have to do, instead of trying to do this on the fly.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so, I'd like to be able to support it, but I just don't think this is the way to get it done, for the short or the long term.
Elder Person Johnson?
Um, I brought up this point probably about five, six months ago, that we put these standards, when a new developer comes in, and we should change the standards before they come in, but, um, I, I support more trees, and I think if you were changing a building and changing it and updating it, in the real estate market, you would have to follow the, the code. So we are changing the parking lot, and I think we should deal with it as that it's a new parking lot and a new space, so I'd like to follow the new tree ordinances if there is some change since the prior time it was built. Thank you.
Elder Person Mijaski?
I, I totally agree with, um, Alder Swadley, only one problem. He, no one is, no one has acted on it. Uh, it's been brought up a couple different times in the history since I've been here. So sadly, here we are. We're, we're sitting on the floor doing it, so this is what you get. You get, either you can vote no, which means basically you really enjoy the views that you get on Highway 51, uh, from, in, in the commercial section there, or you can vote yes, and we can change it and start making our, our entrances a little more aesthetically pleasing.
All right, I'm gonna have the clerk, um, read the motion, and we'll vote by roll.
So a motion to amend, the original motion, um, to state that part of the approval of this plan required the installation of tree islands and trees as required by ordinance in this new development?
As if it were a new development.
As if it were a new development, okay, thank you.
Well, it is actually a new development.
Well, that's debatable. I think you want it to say as if.
No, it's a term.
Right, it's debatable.
What is a new development?
As if.
As if, okay, thank you.
All right, we'll vote by roll.
I got a, I got a question.
No more questions?
Yeah.
Elder Person Engelberger?
I don't have enough information to vote on here. I mean, I hear the Planning Director say that, uh, um, I can't remember what you said a little bit, but I mean.
I can't either.
It's too many things.
You know, I, I guess I'm really confused on what we're voting on here. I mean, I'm a, I'm a member of the Planning Commission, we got two other members sitting here, and I thought we did our due diligence with this project, and, um, everything that we approved in Planning Commission, my understanding was based on our ordinances. So I, I, you've, you've talked about a little bit, Tom, but I haven't seen what's actually not, what we're not complying with here. What aren't we complying with in our ordinance?
Well, that's the problem. The, the policy is, is that when, when a, a, a parking lot changes, it's required to be designed to the new, to new standards.
And where is that, where, where, which ordinance are you, are you referencing for that?
My discussions with, uh, Director Shields in the past have, he is throwing that one at me. Um, so.
Sure I am.
I'm, I'm just using it.
That's the thing, I, I would like to have.
So here we are, and then that's why I said, we do not have a policy to determine when that triggers.
Let me see if I can help. Plant Commission, I believe, Plant Commissioners, help me out. When Plant Commission looked at these items, I believe we looked at three separate proposals. The proposal for the goodwill store, and the proposal for the fueling station. That's two, not three. Two, two separate items.
Well, the third actually was, we took up the, a minor adjustment to the parking lot to allow for, uh, customers to call in and pick up.
Yes.
Have, have, uh, their groceries delivered to their car on pick and save.
At pick and save, thank you, that was the third. So we looked at three independent items within the same parking lot, the same, um, shopping or commercial development. We didn't look at, um, at this as being a whole new parking lot, we looked at the segments and the proposals. Elder Person Mijaski is saying, I disagree with that, with the way you looked at it. I think it should be looked at as, as, um, there have been enough changes here, that the parking lot should be reviewed as if it were new.
Right.
Okay, so before us, at this time, is Elder Person Mijaski's motion, second by Elder Person, Elder Person Johnson, to, to identify that, um, even though there's an ordinance requiring it, that as a part of this approval process for Resolution 141, the conditional use permit, that that parking lot be looked at as if it were a new parking lot and needed to comply with tree islands and all the requirements of new parking lots. Elder Person Hirsch?
So, what, do we have the ordinance number for the, the new parking lot?
I do not.
Tree island?
Trying to find it.
Okay, so that's, I mean, I think that's what, uh, Elder Person Engelberger was requesting is, is there an ordinance for tree items, islands? And people are saying no, but in fact, there is an ordinance, it just is for new parking lots, and because this is, we have new businesses, new islands, new everything in here, new landscaping, it is acting like something new, because the only thing that hasn't changed is the pick and save, but they actually changed things too. So, lots of things have changed here, so I can understand where Elder Person Mijaski is, is coming from, because at all appearances from a citizen, this is really something new here, because we have new stores, new gas station, and everything else. It's not the same old, same old. And so if we're updating, and we're trying to, you know, make our city look better, I agree, I think we need to be up with the times.
Elder Person Kittleson?
I've gotta ask some questions here, because I'm looking at the, the map or the plans. They, we're talking about ninety-eight point six feet by a hundred and seventy-seven point six feet? That's the space. And it looks like there's five pumps and a kiosk for the pay-up? And this is sitting where the semis used to sit when Walmart was there.
Existing parking lot, there's actually a sign there as well, that I, I believe was also gonna be removed.
So they're gonna put this in that area there? I, I, I guess I'm, I'm lost on what all the, the disagreement is, I mean, it's, seems like it would fit there just fine.
No, no, we're talking about.
I realize that, but this here, but I mean, you've got an existing parking lot, and so by looking at the size of what they're putting in, I mean, I don't see where they're changing the parking lot.
Thank you, I have, um, this is all changed.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but the site conversations make it hard, hard to hear. I've got Elder Person Bartlett and Truul.
Yeah, that ordinance is, Minnesota Code 78 dash 604, paragraph three, sub-paragraph D. So there are new ordinances, but also, we talk about, we define substantial change for buildings, as I believe it, it says it's fifty percent, and I think, as Dennis was just saying, this isn't, uh, changing more than fifty percent of the parking lot, so I'm gonna vote no on this amendment. It's not a major overhaul. I would like to see more trees in parking lots in this situation, but I, I think it's not in our zoning code now, and it's not, uh, fair to impose it on the developer at this point, when he's not making more of a change to that parking lot.
Thank you. Elder Person Truul?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I echo, uh, Alderman Bartlett's comments, that's what I was gonna bring up, is, is that effectively, we're talking about, um, my guess is, is probably impacting certainly something less than a third, and probably more likely to, to less than a quarter of the parking lot, uh, with, with this. The other thing is, uh, having said that, um, I certainly respect Alderman Mijaski's comments here, I, I think, you know, the goal here is, is to break up that parking lot, and I know that's what you're, you're really trying to do, uh, and, and add some trees. From our standpoint, as a, from, from my standpoint as a Plant Commission member, um, we have been treating the whole campus, um, again, treating that whole project as, as one campus, and looking at parking spaces and access and the like. And as I said earlier, uh, that was why we made some of the decisions, or made some recommendations on the goodwill, and, and requested to change some things to provide better access, um, through there. Having said that, again, I, I appreciate what you're trying to do, Tom, but I, I would encourage my council folks to, to vote against this motion. I think at this time, um, we're, we are talking about something that is, uh, is, is not affecting more than fifty percent of that parking lot.
Thank you. Elder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor, I, I would agree with Alder Truul and Bartlett, and, and I also agree with Alder Mijaski. I mean, if we need to make some changes, let's make the changes in the ordinances, but not in midstream. I mean, we've, we've got something, uh, you know, we've got something that's on, that I believe we're already complying with our ordinances, and if we need to make changes to those, let's make them, but, uh, I don't think we can in this case. Well, I have a question for Rodney. Because this, as Alder Truul just said, we've, we've voted on like, three or four or five different things with, regarding this site recently. Now today, I drive past here, and I see the parking lot's half tore up. I don't recall seeing where we authorized the parking lot to be tore up. I mean, half the parking lot is gone, and all the.
I'm not.
All it is is dirt, and all the asphalt is sitting out in the middle of the, out near the road.
So it's a new parking lot?
Did we authorize that?
That's a new parking lot.
I'm, I'm not familiar with what's occurring related to that.
That's what's happened today, I mean.
I know they were doing that.
I'd say, probably, a half of that parking lot has been torn up, and it's placed in a pile out by the road.
I know that Associated Bank is getting a new parking lot, but I guess I did drive by this location.
I mean, I, I looked, it, it's basically out in front of goodwill and, uh, um, Tractor Supply. A huge area of the parking lot, probably half of that parking lot is torn up. I don't recall voting on that, so I just wondered where that came from.
I was just gonna ask our guests if they could speak to that. Are you guys aware?
It's funny how that works.
Hi, Sean Nelson with Roundy Supermarkets. I can't speak to what's happening today out there, nothing that we're aware of, unless it was some type of maintenance. That would be, we control everything that's from our, on front of our store over, everything that's, would be goodwill and Tractor Supply over for the parking lot right now, is it under the control of the landlord, who's not present tonight?
What I, what I see on the, uh, on the plans are, you know, restriping, that kind of thing, but you don't tear up asphalt to restripe.
Okay, I don't know, I haven't been that way. Like I said, Associated Bank, I know is getting a new parking lot, I saw them working on it today, but that's all. Elder Person Mijaski?
Um, just wanna comment to Alder Tru, Truul, um, first off, yes, you are a Planning Commissioner, as is Alder Bartlett, but you're also Alder people. What we're, what I'm trying to do is elevate the aesthetics of this community, so that we can compete with other communities for quality of life, to have people to be attracted to come here. We can hide behind process all we want, you know, we like, we're, we're great at talking about it, we're terrible at actually doing any kind of action towards it, so then we get stuck doing what we're doing right now, because nobody does action. I was at Public, a Public Works meeting, two months ago, I had a number of proposals. I don't know where they're at, I haven't, I haven't heard one word, one way or the other, on any of them, and I'm sure that in the future, that we'll be sitting here, because no one's gonna do any actions on any of those. They're, they're, you know, it's, it, look, if, if you wanna have, you know, this, this community functions well, like I said before, it's a great engineering project, and it looks like an engineering project. The aesthetics in this town are abysmal, especially when it comes to redevelopment, and even some of the new stuff that we have. And I won't even, we won't even talk about, uh, some of the buildings that have been going up as of late, and, and the aesthetics of those, and, and how it will affect us in the future. But, keep in mind, you are not just a Planning Commissioner, you've been a Planning Commissioner for a long time, and I think that's part of your problem. You, you are thinking more like a Planning Commissioner than you are about the overall, overall elevation of this community to a, to a better standard.
I'd like, okay, let's get back to the motion on the floor. Is everyone currently aware of what that motion is? Right, Lana, the clerk will read it, and then we'll vote.
I have a motion to amend by Mijaski, um, to state that part of the approval of this plan required the installation of tree islands and trees as required by ordinance, as if this is a new development, with the second by Johnson.
Yes, we'll vote by roll call.
Uh, Borsma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mijaski?
Aye.
Engelberger?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Truul?
No.
Bartlett?
No.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Kittleson?
No.
Uh, Swadley?
No.
Uh, that motion fails on a vote of five to six.
Why don't you guys want more trees? Elder Person Johnson, please. We need to return to the original motion on the floor. Do we need to take a break?
How do you take a vacation?
Elder Person Johnson, please. Elder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor, I, I'm gonna make another motion to table this, because we've had several questions come up, and one of the parking lot being torn up, I mean, motion to table.
Second.
There's a motion by Engelberger, second by Kittleson, to table. We'll vote by roll. That's okay.
Reeves?
It's a motion to table.
Aye.
Uh, Mijaski?
No.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
No.
Uh, Truul?
Uh, no.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, he's not here. Bartlett?
No.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Kittleson?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Uh, motion to table carries on a vote of seven to four.
Let's take a five-minute break, we'll be back at nine thirty.
And the schmo is over.
Done in a minute?
I've given up on that.
You know, I'll see if the wording has.
What? Where I mentioned? So, twenty-sixth, right? There you are, sir.
Well, they were changing the. I don't know what all he's talking about. They were gonna pull these curbs and have me out, and do some work.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
Resolution one.
Resolution one forty-five, twenty seventeen, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the Springstead grade assignments and requests for reconsideration responses. Personnel committee approved five to zero on September eighteenth, and I so move.
Second.
A motion by Alder Person Mieske, second by Boersma. You may convene into closed session if that's your desire.
See, no reason for it.
Okay. All right, Alder Person Mieske, back to you.
Um, I have a question. I'm gonna back this up a little bit. I, I do have a procedural question. Why are we going into close, would we go into closed session, and then have to open up for one more item afterwards? Why, why isn't that in front?
Yep, the, the, the decision was made based on the potential length of the following agenda item?
Good Lord, just shoot me now.
It's a potential...
All right. I'm going to move to go into closed session with this, after reconsidering, per state statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The council may convene and open session to take actions on the matter discussed in closed session, and to consider the remaining items on the agenda.
Second.
We'll vote by roll.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Truul.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Motion passes eleven to zero.
Yeah, we're meeting, we're moving to closed session. Yep.
Jamin.
Yep, with the young gentleman.
Was there something emailed to us on this?
Yeah.
Was it just, uh, in the packet?
I don't remember. I think it may have been, I think it was sent to you by email.
Bob, can you handle it on your own? We've typically not allowed staff to stay during closed session.
Okay, and I had just asked him to come, because he's been working with the human resources.
Alder Person Mieske.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Personnel presents resolution one forty-five, twenty seventeen, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the Springstead grade assignments and requests for reconsideration responses. Personnel approved five to zero on September eighteenth, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Mieske, second by Boersma. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Agenda item seventeen is discussion and possible action regarding the demolition moratorium within the city. This is a request per Alder Person Jensen and Alder Person Kittleson.
Point of order.
Sir?
Um, I would request to know if Alder, Alder Jensen had voted in the affirmative for this, or in the negative.
Well, he's not requesting reconsideration.
No.
It's a new item for discussion. If he were to request reconsideration, it would have been...
You are correct.
Yeah.
I stand corrected.
Alder Person Jensen.
Let Alder Person Kittleson handle it. He's the one who brought it to my attention.
Alder Person Kittleson.
Okay, thank you. I wanted this to be placed on here, because I think it's very important for us to discuss the moratorium that has been placed. I think that with the moratorium, that we have kind of limits when we go out for a request for proposals, for possibility of more people to submit bids. And, being a business person myself, if I knew that there was a possibility that the moratorium wouldn't be removed for what I wanted to do, I wouldn't have any time or effort to be put into this. And knowing how the council operates, sometimes it's a hit or miss situation. So, I really feel that this moratorium that's citywide really needs to be reconsidered. It just isn't fitting what everything is. I totally understand there's reasons why people would like to have it, but we don't have to accept any and all proposals. We can look through everything, we just have to have, we have to give the people doing the proposals the latitude that they need to do it. Does that make sense?
Yep, thank you. Alder Person Boersma.
I just have a question, and that is, if we would remove this moratorium, it doesn't mean that automatically buildings are coming down, is that right?
Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did, I thought that Dennis's idea had merit. I, I believe that, you know, we're, anything that, that's, that's going to involve the demolition of any building within the city, is gonna have to come through us anyways. So...
No.
Not necessarily true.
Well, no, not necessarily, no, 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 but I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's... No.
Did you listen to the attorney's...
Which building are you talking about?
About the demolition of the complex, trailer complex.
The highway trailer building? I think the city council would, well...
No.
Let me back up. No, I mean, the RDA owns the property.
Yeah, the RDA... The RDA, property, and they're gonna, they would, they would come to us with the bids and everything, so we would have control of it.
So the city controls money, but, but, so you could, through the power of the purse, effectively, probably, yes.
So, so I...
But that, but I just wanna make sure I, we're clear on this.
Yeah.
I think that the redevelopment authority, as the owner, could seek the approvals necessary to demolish the building.
Absolutely.
And I don't, as I, under current law that we have in the city, I don't think that's a city council decision with respect to that structure.
No, but we have the first things on.
So it, so I think it would simply be through your authority to disapprove funding. And it's so...
If that was needed.
If that was needed.
That's right.
And...
That's right.
I'm not really sure how to analyze the funding issue. I mean, to my knowledge, the RDA doesn't have any money, but maybe they do, and I, I don't know.
So, so my point is, is that, I agree with Dennis, is that if we, if we were to just remove this, that it's going to give anybody out there who's interested in bidding on it, you know, a, their ceiling. You know, that, that's, I, I think what your point was, Dennis, and I, I would happen to agree with that. May or may not make a difference, I don't know, but I think it would.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch, and then Mieske.
Um, if you're talking about the highway trailer buildings, and just the moratorium on the, what is it, the blacksmith shop, that, which is actually what you're probably referring to, I, I would just have you entertain, you know, let, RDA met last week, and we have a plan of action. And we might, you know, put out, we have a plan of action to get the RFP for a demo, plan of action to look for other possible, um, people interested in, you know, restoring it. Let us get back to, when we come up with, you know, we're getting all this information. But let's not be so hasty in taking out the moratorium. If we come back and we say, you know what, it's gonna be a good idea to, you know, get bids out there with the RFP, let RDA come back and say, hey, now we're ready to, like, take this moratorium off, because we have this plan of action. Let us develop this plan of action and present it to you before you make these kind of hasty decisions on the moratorium at this time. With respect to that site, if you're talking about other sites in the city, let's discuss that. But I'm asking you for the highway trailer building at this point, let us do our job and get the information, so you guys can make an informed, intelligent decision, not just based on, you know, a moratorium based on emotion at this time.
Alder Person Mieske, and then Kittleson.
I hope everybody just remembers the last lengthy discussion we just had about parking lots and trees and all that good stuff. Remember that? Say yes, or no?
Yes.
So, and the, the big, the big argument there was, a lot of you voted no, and I think Alder Jensen did also, and Truul, and Bartlett, and a few others, and Swadley and Engelberger. Because the process. We don't have a policy, we don't have a process. So what you're trying to do right now is to assert that process, that, that we put in place to get things sorted out, that's why there's a moratorium. Until that, until that process is taken care of, this moratorium should stay in place.
Thank you. Alder Person Kittleson.
Yeah, I would have to, uh, kind of address that the opposite direction. The moratorium was actually placed, in my opinion, as a sentimental way, and kind of off the cuff at the time that it was, uh, put out to be voted on. So I really feel like the moratorium should be lifted. I don't think it has anything to do with, it, as far as policies go, um, there wasn't any policies to start when some of the actions were taken. People had gone into City Hall, tried to acquire the permits that were needed, were told what to do, and were kept strung along, strung along, strung along. Nobody had any answers for anybody. City Attorney at one time said that it was okay, it followed suit. And then, just a short while ago, now, it, they're told that it doesn't follow suit, so the moratorium holds it up. The applicants to, to go into this in detail were never informed from City Hall that a personal person could not own a private park that owned it. Can I call point of order here? Well, this all, this all runs into this. I don't know if this is appropriate, that you are involved with this discussion, because you're talking about your building. I fall underneath the moratorium. You are correct. I understand that, but I think that there could be a perceived conflict of interest there. Well, then, you know what? And, and all on... I'm sorry, I'm... No, that's fine. I'm not ruling on this, I'm just calling it. Jim, Jim, that's totally fine. And, uh... Well, it's for everybody's good, including yours. That's fine. You know what, then, I, I will leave the building at this time, so you can mark me down as leaving at this time. You guys can discuss while I walk.
Yeah.
Sure. Thanks.
Continue discussion. Councilperson Swadley.
Well, you know, that was really the only thing I wanted to raise, as far as the moratorium itself, um, you know, the timing of it. We made a lot of changes on the RDA based on some things that happened in the past. And I think that we really ought to give this group of people on the RDA an opportunity to do their job, and not undermine whatever direction they wanna go, and whatever recommendation they wanna bring us. If there's a strong need to lift a moratorium, I'm sure that group will let us know. Whether we lift it or not, on that particular building, is not gonna make that building come down any quicker. So, I don't understand the point of lifting it right now, we don't even have bids. In fact, the worst thing we could do is lift it, go get the bids, and then say, no, we don't wanna accept them, because then we'll never get another bid on them. So I, I think we should let the process go through, and see what becomes of it. And as far as, you know, the other buildings that may be involved now or in the future, you know, we're still trying to get the ordinances worked out at Landmarks, and working with the city attorney, and once we get through that process, hopefully, we can get some, you know, resolution to that one, because it's been messy, and, you know, it's created division in the community, and it's unfortunate.
I do think, though, to my, my request earlier, and I'll go back to that, in that the Landmarks Committee, and, and I'll make the request, that they, that they try to expedite their process, because we do need answers on, on questions that are out there. We do need answers on, on the moratorium in the downtown overlay district. So I would formally request that they meet as, as they can expeditiously, and bring that to closure. I mean, certainly, some of the projects, like the...
And I'll certainly communicate that with our chair, because, you know, I'm sure that group would love to have closure on that issue as well. So I, I agree with you.
Thank you, Alder Person Hirsch, and then Engelberger.
Um, maybe Attorney Dragni could go into what, the other building on Main Street. I thought that the main thing that was holding that up was because they proposed a public park, and it had to go back to planning to figure out if it was allowable, or if you were gonna change the, you know, add in public par, or private park into list of land uses. Or has it, you know, because you, you kept on saying it can't be a private park, and therefore, that's where it was held up. And so, yes, there was a, but then, earlier, you said, because they got their application in before this moratorium stuff started, that they were grandfathered, or bothered not to be part of this moratorium. So I'm really confused of where they are, and I feel for the, the people, because I think it's, it's a mess. And, you know, we need to clean it up quickly, because it's looking bad on all of us.
I'll answer it as simply as I can. It is a complicated question. So the, what, what my analysis is, is that their original application, that they do have a right to have that application considered and acted upon, notwithstanding the moratorium. But, there are at least two problems with that application. One is, um, that it was not complete. For example, it did not include a landscaping plan. And as you may recall, the, um, Plant Commission conditionally approved the application, but the condition of approval was, you need to bring us a landscaping plan.
But that's when it was a private park, and you said that private parks are not allowed.
So that is the...
So therefore, you can't have a landscaping plan.
Well, that's the second problem with the application, is that it proposed a private park, and your ordinance says that, um, that type of land use, it defines active, public outdoor recreation and passive outdoor public recreation, as uses that occur on public land. So I interpreted your code to, to say that those kinds of uses have to take place on public land. Now, why your ordinance says that, doesn't make sense to me, because I don't know why it should matter, whether it's public or private land, but that's what your ordinance says. So, those were the two problems with the application, okay? The public land issue, in my mind, I, I wasn't really focused on that issue until after the Plant Commission took its action. To me, that wasn't, that wasn't something I had looked at, that wasn't something that I was concerned about. But that was an issue that was raised at the Plant Commission meeting, and is a concern that people asked me to look at, and I did look at. And when I did look at it, I said, okay, I see your point. They're proposing something that doesn't seem to be allowable. So, the two problems with the original application are, one, it's proposing this private public park, which does not seem to be allowable, and two, it was incomplete. Plant Commission approved it conditioned upon them bringing in a landscaping plan. I interpret the moratorium to say that if somebody had a pending application that was incomplete, once that moratorium was adopted, they couldn't then come in and supplement the application, and make it complete, and have it continue to be processed. In my mind, as I understand the moratorium, until that moratorium is lifted, we can't, we can't allow them to, post adoption of the moratorium, supplement or amend their application in any way, and, and then have that amended or supplemented application be processed. The only thing they're entitled to have considered, notwithstanding the moratorium, is what they submitted before the moratorium was adopted. That's how I interpret the moratorium. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, so they're kind of stuck. But, see, but the thing is, what the question is, is that if there is no private park, why do they need a landscape plan, so would it go back to their original application?
Um, well...
Point of order, this, this is not relevant to this discussion, I don't believe.
Well, it talks about the moratorium, so I think it is.
Yes, it is, because if the, the moratorium doesn't apply to what was presented for the discussion, I mean, you know, figure that out.
So, you may recall that one of the things that I... So, you may recall that one of the things that I, that I came to conclude is that if they just wanted to have it as a vacant lot, that that's allowable. And I think your question is, if it's not a park use that they're proposing, then?
Then why do they need a landscape?
A landscape plan.
If, if, if the private park isn't allowed based on what is available, why would, if it's just going to be a vacant lot, why do they need to have a landscape plan?
So, the concern is that in their application, both in their written application and then, again, at the hearing before the Plan Commission, they said that they are proposing, their proposed use of the property is as a park-like setting that would be open to the public to use and enjoy. So, they, that's how they described their proposed use of the land. So, that's their application. That's what they have proposed. So, if we were to, if they were to now amend their application and say, we're proposing a new and different land use, that amendment to the application would be made post-moratorium and could not be processed under the moratorium. As I understand the moratorium, now, if the council says that's not what the moratorium means, you know, you guys want to amend the moratorium to say, applications that were submitted prior to the adoption of the moratorium may be amended and supplemented and continue to be processed, notwithstanding the moratorium, we can do that. But, that's not my understanding of the moratorium rate, as it is today. The language is, no further applications or requests for demolition, et cetera, et cetera, may be processed. And I, I interpret that to mean, if you had an application that was pending and, and now you're making changes to it, that that's a further application. But, again, the council has the, the absolute right to say, we want to change that. That's not what we intended. We want to make it clear. Or, maybe that is what you intended. I don't know. That's my best run at it.
I have a comment from Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Getting back to the issue at hand here, this council passed a motion to, for the moratorium, and it was based on, on until the city council has considered possible changes to demolition-related ordinances. Those demolition-related ordinance have not been addressed yet. Once those are addressed, then we can take action on this moratorium. I don't know why we're even having this discussion. I don't know why this is on the table even. We haven't done what our motion said we were supposed to do. Period.
Alderperson Truel.
And, Mike, went exactly where I was going to go. That's been one of my challenges with this. And with regard to Highway Trailer, from a practical standpoint, whether you want me to wait till the next, next item or whatever, the discussion about, the one thing I've learned over the course of, of the last few months, at least from developers, is that if we do anything with the Highway Trailer building, we effectively jeopardize historic tax credits. Now, unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, whatever, unfortunately, last, last week, the governor took some action that severely limits the availability for those tax credits. But, but the one thing that the folks from Gorman and Company told me is that if we are trying to preserve part of, again, the, the blacksmith shop or whatever, and we want to use it for public purposes, or for nonprofit, or like, historic tax credits aren't eligible for those uses. So, I find myself in probably a unique situation, in terms of where a lot of you might think I would normally come down on this. I think Regina said it best. If you're talking about the Highway Trailer building, let's let us figure out what the heck we're going to do, what our options are, and then come back. Actually, the, the way that our moratorium is, is set up on the Highway Trailer building now, it probably sends even more mixed signals to potential developers, because, again, we're telling them you have to keep part of the building, and, and from what I understand, that in and of itself limits their ability to get historic tax credits. So, at the end of the day, it feels like it's more of an all or nothing, in terms of what to do with that building, or at least to be able to give a future developer an opportunity to come and say, hey, we're willing to save part of the building. Clearly, it's, it's, it's been expressed from this body that we'd like to try and see if there's a way to, to tie our, back to our historic roots. If there's a way to incorporate that, that's great. But, they would be understanding at that point that they're not eligible for tax, historic tax credits. So, I guess my point is, I come back to that same point. I was a bit challenged on why we were taking this up. I appreciate the, the folks, you know, we can always have the discussion. But, I was on the same point that, that Alderman Engelberger was, was, and I thought that was consistent with the discussion we had earlier this evening, where we were asking Attorney Dregney and, and Landmarks to move in all, in all speed, to try and, and take whatever actions they need to make. And then, once we know where they're going, then we can, we can potentially lift the, the moratorium. So, I, I find it a little interesting as to why we're, we're taking up again tonight, because I thought that was the condition under which we were going to reconsider this.
Thank you. Alderperson Jensen.
Well, my frustration is that it seems that we're, we're just, we're taking two steps forward and just as many back. We're not getting anywhere. We're stuck in the mud. We're, we're putting up signals that are telling developers, the RDA, and ourselves. I mean, we, we just, we're confusing this. And, and I, and I just think that if we're, if we simplify it, if we just say, okay, this is something that we are going to be in, in control of, that we can let the RDA do their work without any kind of complications and just, just move it forward. And as, and as to, you know, the reason for it, I, I thought I made that clear. It was just simply to remove an obstacle that may or may not deter any contractor from making a proposal. That, that's it. I don't know, I guess, I, I don't really see any need to, to have this. I really don't. And, and as far as the, the changes that, that our attorney's working on with, with the Landmarks, that was supposed to have been done, I think, March, we were talked about that. That was supposed to be a simple process. It was only going to take a month.
No.
Who said that?
He said a couple of years.
I wanted it to be done then, but the attorney was off for quite some time.
It's obviously not taking a month. I mean, and you, you said it was going to be a long process.
Well, I don't know how long it's going to take.
So, but anyways, it, it was supposed to have been done. And that's, that's one of the reasons why, and I wish we would have put a sunset on it. I didn't. But, I, I don't know. I just, I just want to, I want to take that obstacle out of the way. And I wish that, you know, well, I just hope it passes, but...
Is there any further discussion?
There's no motion here, do we?
There is no motion regarding Agenda Item 17.
Yep. Alderperson Hirsch. There is no obstacle right now, as Scott has said, with RDA. We'll come back to you when we have our ducks in a row, because we have a lot of things in motion. And so, when we feel that it is, that we need to remove it, when we're ready to do an RFP or we need to make a decision, we will then come back to it. I think we're premature. We have, you know, the Landmarks and the attorney working on what we requested. Let's just let them do their job. And maybe, as the mayor has suggested, we put a timeline on it, but we don't want to put it too short, so they don't do a good job. You got to give them enough time. So, you know, I don't know. If they meet in January, maybe, you know, that's four more months. Is that too short?
I think we should be meeting monthly at, at least.
No, no. I thought Landmarks meets monthly.
They should, but I mean, we met in June, but we didn't reconvene to start working on this again until September. So, I think...
Career vacations mixed in with key people, and, you know, that happens.
Right.
We certainly want to expedite it, because I feel for them, you know? It's a difficult situation where you have time and money and energy invested, and you really don't have anything to show for it. And I would be pretty frustrated myself. And so, I'm, you know, I want closure to this as well. I don't really have a preference on what happens with any of the buildings. I just want us to make good decisions. And I think we ultimately will, if...
A deadline by the end of the year? Because that can be too short because of all the holidays and everything?
You know, I can have that conversation with the chair, but I don't want to put artificial deadlines on anything, just like I wouldn't want to do that to the RDA, you know?
But it's going on a year.
You know?
Alderperson Mieski.
Call the question, or actually, table. I moved the table.
Second. There's a motion by Mieski, and second by Hirsch to table. All those in favor, aye? Opposed, no?
Move to adjourn.
You got a couple other issues here, don't you? Two more.
There's a motion to adjourn by, I heard...
You going to finish the agenda, or no?
You can, there can be, there can be a motion to adjourn.
If there's a motion, you can adjourn.
Was there a second?
I did, I did.
Oh, we can work it off if you want to.
So, that is pending.
Yep, as soon as I get it written down. One second, please. There's a motion by Alderperson Mieski, second by Alderperson Hirsch to adjourn. All those in favor, aye? Opposed, no?
No.
That motion fails.
I want a roll.
Sure. Yep, we can do a roll call. This is on the motion to adjourn, okay?
I'm present.
Jensen.
Nope.
Truel.
Aye.
Bartlet.
No.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Gilson.
Nope.
Swadley.
No.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieski.
Aye.
We stand tied five to five.
So, if the mayor does not vote, the motion to adjourn is not adopted.
You didn't vote.
I didn't vote?
No.
You're going to come back to me?
You passed.
I voted present.
All right, what does that mean?
It means I'm here.
Right, but what does that mean regarding the vote on the table? It's not a yes or a no.
You passed. You want to vote?
If you pass, you can do that. You can move on.
You can break the tie if you'd like. It's up to you.
You said you wanted to vote.
I did.
Pardon me?
I voted present.
All right, the motion fails due to the tie. We'll continue with our agenda.
She can't break it.
Agenda item number eighteen. No, now we've got a question. Did we, it'll be tabled. Seventeen, Agenda Item Eighteen, is a request by Alderperson Jensen and Alderperson Kittleson. Alderperson Jensen.
Well, I don't know if there's any discussion necessary here. I think it was pretty well discussed in the first one, so I'd say, let's just let it go.
No.
Before, because, I mean, you, you did.
No.
You did. You talked about this pretty good.
Alderperson Truel.
Thank you. If we were, if we didn't work on adjourn, we're going to, I'll at least give you the quick update. Again, I forwarded, this was at, at the committee of the whole, we were directed, RDA was directed to do a couple of things. Quick update, we are in the process of, of trying to put together an RFP for the demolition, to find out what, what it would cost to take down the, the Highway Trailer complex. We are, the, the initial RFP is looking to try and take advantage of the likely contractor, Earth Construction, who will be on there, trying to get them to help us put together a proposal, so we at least know what kind of dollars we're talking about, as opposed to going through a full-blown RFP and going out to a lot of different contractors. We're trying to, to do, this, this will keep our costs down in terms of what it actually will cost to create the RFP, and also give us, hopefully, a good cost, a good cost estimate. The second part of this is, is with regard to asking the RDA to reach out and contact the Gorman and Company. Hopefully, you all received an email from me last week. I did have the opportunity to meet with Ted Matcom, who's the Wisconsin Market President for Gorman and Company. Effectively, there were a number of points that came out of it. I was asked to specifically ask about whether they would consider re-looking at, at their original proposal to us. They indicated at this time, they don't have the interest in doing it. They couldn't get it put together yet this fall. They also have a number of other projects, and so they wouldn't have the availability. They would be interested if the facility were still there and potentially putting in a proposal for next year, going through that cycle. Again, the WEDA cycle requires applications to happen in December, with awards being made the following spring. Unfortunately, following my conversation with, with Mr. Matcom, he did text us after he saw the governor's action, and his text was quite, quite brief. It said effectively, that was the death of our building. If the historic credits aren't going to happen, it would make that project, make renovating that project very difficult. Having said that, I also asked him, per the request, whether they would consider either looking at being the master developer, or whether they would consider doing a market rate project. They indicated in both those cases, the answer was no. So, that's, that's the, the quick update. I would also note that we did have a public safety meeting the other night to talk about additional actions and things that we can or can't do to try and secure the building. And effectively, we're looking at, again, just doing everything we can from a fencing standpoint, what we have present. We also have talked about the fact that, once, I'm hoping at the next council meeting, we will have, we'll have gotten information on the grant from the state, the matching grant on the state, to allow us to take down the Forman Milfab building. Once I know that we have that grant in place, I will bring the, the motion back to us to take that down. It's still anticipated that that can come down yet this fall. And frankly, once that does come down, we will be able to tighten up the, the fencing and, and the security, perhaps around the Highway Trailer building. Right now, we're trying to, to manage a ten or twelve acre campus there from a, from a security standpoint. So, those are the quick updates that I have. Got questions?
Scott, with respect to the RDA, we also talked about, because the RDA did know at that time, when we were discussing about Gorman and the tax credit, that we could possibly backfill the, the loss in the historic tax credit with TIF. So...
Correct.
And so, you have not gone back to Gorman to see if that then would open up a proposal from them?
We had asked them originally what, whether, again, my, my questions were effectively, would they revisit their previous proposal, which didn't have any TIF as a part of it. But, direct answer to your question, no, we've not gone back and asked what it would take for them to consider this with some type of other public assistance, TIF assistance, perhaps.
Thank you. Alderperson Boersma.
I was at the RDA meeting the last time, and it's my understanding that you are looking at the two possibilities of, or three possibilities of what it's going to cost to tear the whole thing down, and what it's going to cost to tear half of it down.
Correct.
And keep the blacksmith shop. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. The, the discussion we had was that, as long as we're going through the process of, of trying to get some cost estimates, let's ask for, for the alternate, again, to take the whole building down, or take, take part of the building down and retain the blacksmith shop. So, that is...
And that would be with the existing contractor who would tear down the rest of the Milfab?
Correct. Again, with Earth Construction, the folks that are our apparent low bidder for, to take down the rest of the Milfab buildings.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple things, I guess. One, isn't the reason for this being on the agenda today, that this came from the committee of the whole, and the council would basically vote on these motions? Is that?
No.
Isn't that what it was here for?
No.
It's not?
I do, it's here.
Okay, just for discussion.
Because it was directing an RDA.
So...
The prolonged agony.
I'm just doing what I'm told. That's all I got.
Okay. Counselperson Swedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I was able to just briefly stop into the public safety meeting before Landmarks that night, and you were having a discussion about potential safety issues, getting in and out of the site to remove the Milfab building. And I don't know if you had any closure on that conversation, or if a determination was made. But, it seems to me that if the decision is to remove the Highway Trailer building, maybe it would be safer to do that first.
We don't have a grant for it.
I, I guess from, from my perspective, Tim... I guess from my perspective, Tim, we have not, have not, because that building has not been moved forward from a standpoint of actually demoing it, we don't have costs, we haven't submitted for other grants or aids, whereas the Milfab Building was a straightforward proposal, we have been working on trying to make that happen as a part of our overall riverfront redevelopment. So that project is certainly ahead of it, it was bid months ago, and is there.
So you think the biggest challenge would be getting the grant, or, I mean, you're going to get the demo bid probably fairly quickly, I would think, if you're dealing with the same firms?
I'm hoping that we will have numbers in short order here to get a feel for, again, we've, the numbers bandied about as to what the demo cost on that building will be. I'm hoping that we'll have a professional estimate in relatively short order.
And the grant's not transferable from the Milfab site to the Highway Trailer Building?
No.
So if you were to apply for a grant for the demolition of the Highway Trailer, when would you do that, and when would that be awarded?
I couldn't honestly answer that at the moment. Again, everything has been kind of, the schedules were all messed up because of the state budget.
Sure.
But I would assume that, my recollection last time was that we, those grants were awarded on, I believe, on a quarterly basis, so we'd have to do our due diligence, get in an application, and go from there. So at a minimum, I think we're looking at that, even if we decided tonight we want to take the building down, I would be amazed if the building could come down anything less than six to nine months, from a standpoint of grants, getting a firm RFP bidding it, doing the other things that would be necessary.
Okay.
So that was kind of the discussion we'd had at public safety, about, you know, realizing that, that any actions that we take, we need to be thinking on at least those kind of horizons. Additionally, if we were to talk about trying to save the building for perhaps a WEDA cycle next year, the Gorman folks had indicated to us that, indicated to me, that if they were to wait and apply for the WEDA cycle next December, it would be the spring of nineteen before they would potentially get awards, they would spend the rest of nineteen locking up their credits and finishing their proposals and the like. They said it actually would be aggressive if they could finish everything up by the end of nineteen, but new construction, reconstruction could start in the spring of twenty, and we'd likely be talking about then, sometime spring to summer of nineteen twenty-one, before we would see a product actually down there. So part of that discussion was, at what point would a developer be responsible for that building? And kind of the short answer to that question is, we need, if we're going to keep that for that type of renovation, we need to take care of it for probably about two years, until at least nineteen, when they would have an award and know that they're moving forward with the project.
Thank you.
Further comments? Alderperson Engelberger.
I got a couple things. With regard to the RDA meeting the other night, Christensen brought up the fact that he needed more direction from the council, or they had questions from the council. What questions do they have? I mean, I, I heard him say that, he talked for about five minutes, and I, what I said to the RDA was, if you have questions, get them to the council, so we can put them on the agenda. And we need, we need, we need to know what their questions are, if they have questions, so if they want some direction from us.
I don't disagree, and actually, I would say that one of the outcomes of the Committee of the Whole was that I certainly had a chance to hear a number of comments, and you may recall, I said, I think I get what you were looking for, and so we tried to take those things back. And so, again, I've tried in the course of less than two weeks here, to try and see what I could track down in terms of, you know, getting proposals, so we can actually find out what kind of numbers we'll be talking about, and find out, you know, our particular developers' interests. We had been, a lot of folks had been bringing up Gorman and Company, and, you know, perhaps misrepresenting or hoping for a different outcome. I will tell you that I was, as I said at the RDA meeting that evening, I was incredibly impressed with what Mr. Matcom shared with us. Clearly, he was very aware of the building. There had been some comments that were made early on in the process, that perhaps the proposal we had gotten, RDA had gotten from the Gorman Group, perhaps was something that was just pulled off the shelf from years ago. He assured me, and based on his knowledge of the current conditions and other things, that they genuinely did look at that building. To your question about getting guidance, one bit of guidance I think that we do need to provide as a council to RDA is what type of housing we would like to see down there. We've certainly had a number of discussions about whether or not we're looking for a market rate, or we're looking for, you know, whether we'll accept some type of public subsidized housing of some sort there. I think that would go a long way, because we have certainly talked about a variety of issues related to that, and so ultimately, that kind of guidance would be helpful for us.
I've asked for those discussions for the last six, eight months.
Yep.
But we haven't had them yet. A couple other things. One, Mark, the consultant that was at the Shirets, what was it?
Yeah.
From Ingberg Anderson?
Correct.
Has anybody talked to him recently? I mean, he sounded like he had all kinds of ideas for what we could do with this property.
Yeah, I mean, the answer is yes. I mean, he continues to be interested in trying to find ways to, again, use creatively the blacksmith part of the building. As I said earlier, one of the challenges we have with that is, again, it won't qualify for TIF funding if that stays, it becomes more of a public side, but as Regina just asked, again, that might be a case where a project might require more TIF incentives.
I think he had some ideas for the whole site, not just the Highway Trailer Building.
No, he does. But again, he had some really innovative ideas for.
We checked that out, that's something we should be doing. The other, the last thing I wanted to talk about was, and Rodney, maybe you can give me some information here, there was a discussion at the RDA meeting regarding just allowing the contractor that is going to do the demo for the Milfab site, have them get us some prices for the Highway Trailer Building. Does that follow our policies as far as getting bids from contractors? I mean, if you're talking about a million dollar project, don't we have certain projects where you have to actually put out RFPs and get bids?
The way I understood it is, they're going to ask him to provide some professional estimates of cost, not solicit bids for it at this point. At some point, you will have to use the public bidding law to facilitate the.
I mean, the way I understood it, sitting there in that meeting, it was like, we'll see if they want to do it, and what's the price, you know? I mean, to me, that's totally against our policies.
And additionally, Alderman Engelberger, as I think you're aware, we also talked about the, trying to get, asked them for an opinion of cost to take down the Carpet Warehouse Building, which we also are, will be closing on upfront. Again, we've got a contractor that was the apparent low bidder, that was the low bidder amongst five or seven bids that we received, so we're looking for good numbers and good information. And ultimately, to the discussion, the previous discussion about the moratorium and funding, RDA has no funds, so anything that we do is going to have to come back to us as a full council to make action and go from there. So you do ultimately have a pretty strong position in terms of anything that's going to happen down there.
Thank you. I don't believe, as I'm listening to discussion, that action is required under Agenda Item Eighteen. I'm hearing, that's what I'm hearing as a good census. Let's move on to nineteen. This is a discussion and possible action. Request by Alderperson Kittleson.
The question I had on this would be, any of you guys that are in construction, is there any way to shore up that building?
Yes.
Or the simple reason is, we really should consider South Street getting opened up. I mean, I don't know if there's any way we can frame it up somehow, if there's, what they do to take care of that? Because South Street is a very important street, and if you start looking at numbers, and Scott, you had talked, it could be a couple of years before anything could be done. And so what value do we put the possible EMS call around the corner when they have to go up two blocks instead? So I don't know. Does anybody here have any knowledge on that?
Alderperson Engelberger.
Yeah, I'll throw my two cents in. I mean, I'm not going to recommend that we, you know, do any shoring up of the building itself. I don't believe the building's going to fall down myself. I mean, I think there's, you know, we got a report that says there's some potential hazards. It doesn't say anything that the building's going to fall down, and, you know, to me, what's going to make that building fall down is either an earthquake or a tornado. That's what would make that building fall down. Now, if you want a quick fix, my opinion, to have checked out, I don't know if this is possible or not, but you may want to have it checked out, see if we can rent a couple of fifty or sixty foot coal trains that are twelve feet high and ten feet wide. Those things are heavy, very heavy. Park them right next to the building, they're ten feet wide, you could put it two feet away from the building, you'd have, you'd have twelve feet out to the outside of that coal car. You would be sticking into the road probably about six feet, maybe? You could put some barricades around there. You could open that, open that street up next week, if you really wanted to. If that makes people feel safe, I think that would probably do the trick. How much would it cost to do that? I have no idea. I would think it wouldn't be that expensive, but, you know, that's something to take a look at. I don't know if it would work or not, but it's something that's heavy duty. If the building happens to fall down, which I don't think it would for another fifty years or so, you know, then the coal car would catch most of the debris, it probably wouldn't do much damage to the, out into the street. I mean, you know, there's an idea, if you want to check something out, you can open the, open the street up next week.
Alderperson Kittleson.
I guess, you know, I mean, we have to talk about the risk factor to the city as far as insurance goes, what's, we can be done, what can't be done, but I'm just trying to go discussion dialogue for somehow to get the street opened up, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense. I mean, I would have to agree with you, I don't think it's going to come down that soon.
Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would also just note that at public safety, we did talk about, with regard to EMS and fire services and the like, we are going to, the chief, Lack, is going to be looking down there to change some of the parking, and we're going to limit some parking so that we've got better circulation for the ladder truck and the like to get through. So there will be some impact. We focused on trying to minimize that impact as much as possible, but looking at basically the back of the fire station, going east, and trying to figure out, we're also looking at some additional signage, both some stop signs and some detour signs, to help folks know what's going to happen as we go through the winter.
Further comments? Alderperson Boersma.
So Scott, just to get the rubber meets the road, when are we going to hear about the, when are we going to get these ideas about how much it's going to cost, and whether or not it's possible to tear it one down, or whatever?
As I said earlier, again, we're reaching out for some professional opinions here, trying to outline to them what we're looking for. Again, part of the challenge of that is to let them understand what you're trying to save, if we're saving the blacksmith side of the building. But I'm, certainly before the end of the year, I would hope that within the course of the next couple of weeks, we would actually have numbers.
Do we give them a timeline, or not?
This body isn't great on timelines anyway, Sid, so what difference does it make? We are trying to, trying to get information and do it as expeditiously as possible, and, you know, so I'm hoping that we're going to have information within the next two council meetings.
Okay. Alderperson Johnson.
Aye. I want to thank you, Scott, for all that you've been doing, and everybody else on that committee.
All right, further discussion? Is further discussion needed? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Hirsch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reeves, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries.
I remember the time before when I said yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Oh, golly. Do you have a call?
Of course, all the time. You said it would be.
You get what happened.
When you're going to get that.
Sorry.